Right, seeing that it's seven o'clock, we are back from our executive session to resume our regular meeting of January 28, 2019. Has anyone from the press arrived since earlier? No? All right. All right. So please join me in a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have some public service announcements. First is George Simoneon from the Chelmsford High School Alumni Hall of Fame. George, would you like to say a few words?
There'll be more than a few words.
I was going to say that. A few?
George, thank you. Thank you for having me. And with me is Terry Muschihi, the president of the association. The Chelmsford High School Alumni Association proudly announces its 29th annual Hall of Fame induction. The ceremony will take place on the evening of the 23rd of March, 2019, at the UMass Lowell Conference Center in Lowell. The program includes the social at 5:45, dinner at 6:30, and the induction at 7:00 P.M. Those being inducted are as follows: Gail Mullin Bowden, class of 1979; Lauren H. Cochrane, a teacher at the high school; Mara Devaney Dua Asamoah, class of 1988; William Jard Jr., class of 1989; Patricia Galvin McCavity, class of 1976; Peter McHugh, class of 1964; Judy Merrill Metz, class of 1973; Michael G. O'Keefe, class of 1987; and Louise Quinn Trembley, class of 1962. The alumni association will also present its Lucy E. Simoneon Golden Lan Award, which is given to an organization or an individual who has been an extraordinary supporter of the students of Chelmsford High School over the years. This year, the recipient will be Evelyn S. Thorne, and a presentation will also be made at the induction ceremony. For information relative to the purchase of tickets for the induction ceremony, call Terry at (978) 251-3788, or me, (978) 256-3100. And for those of you that have been to these in the past, you know it's a great night, okay? Not only from a social viewpoint, but the fact is that we're recognizing some great, great alumni, okay? And it just never, never sees it, amaze me, okay? They just keep coming. They just keep coming. The graduates of Chelmsford High School go out there and do big things. And we have some outstanding staff that we also recognize. And this, we're doing one again tonight at the Hall of Fame. Questions?
Just should add, it's easier to get Super Bowl tickets than tickets to this function.
Well, no, well, you're kind. Okay, thank you, thank you, okay. Well, yeah, we do sell out, okay? We do. Last year, we had to squeeze, we had to squeeze another table in because they were late with it, and they were coming for a particular, you know, an individual, okay? And so we had to stick them in the corner, and they were complaining about where they were, but I said, "Well, you had two months' notice to get to this," okay? But anyway.
It's always good to get your tickets early.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. In fact, I, two tables went this afternoon. Well, thank you so much for having me, okay?
Thank you.
George, $60, George.
Oh, yes, yeah, $60 includes the whole evening. Well, that was easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a announcement on rabies clinic. Is anyone here from?
Yeah.
Vivian.
Who's got a type?
It's all up to you.
It's a scary place up there. All right, so in celebration of the annual Let's Have a Stranger Stab Your Crotter Week, the town clerk's office is hosting a annual rabies vaccination clinic on Saturday, February 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., noon, at the Chelmsford Dog Pound, 2 Old North Road in Chelmsford. You can get a rabies shot for $15, microchips for $25. You can license your dog, if you're a Chelmsford resident, for 2019. You need a separate check for rabies shots versus licenses. And if you've had a rabies shot before, you need to send that, you need to show us your previous certificate for a multi-year vaccine, otherwise you want to get the one-year vaccine. Even if it's expired by a day, you still need that certificate. Animals should be in the, either on a leash or in a carrier. Most popular is dogs, cats, and ferrets. We're getting a lot of ferrets lately. If you have any other questions, you can call the town clerk's office at (978) 250-5205. We'll also be doing a little collection of supplies for both the pound and the Lowell Humane Society. Dog food, cat food, litter. The Humane Society also has a need for office supplies, stamps, gift cards for incidental things that are going around, so we'll be collecting for them. If you have any questions, like I say, town clerk's office or here I am. Time is up. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Winterfest coming up. Is anyone here to speak of the Winterfest tonight?
I don't believe so.
Do you want me to run through the entire?
You can go through the highlights, yeah.
Yeah, all right. So, Winterfest this year, 2019, will run from February 1st, the weekend of February 1st to February 3rd. Starting off on Friday night at the Chelmsford Community Center from 7:00 to 9:00, they're having a Scottish country dancing. There's also Chelmsford Forum, free skate, and then the Chelmsford Public Library, they're having a...
No, they're not.
Oh, sorry, that's being moved. You're corrected. I'm corrected, thank you. Saturday at 9:30, they start again on the Common with the Boy Scout Troop 75, showing them what it takes to camp outside in the cold. 9:30 to 5:30 at the Chelmsford Public Library, the Chelmsford Cultural Council is going to have their photography contests and exhibit. From 10:00 to 3:00 at the Trinity Lutheran Church, there's going to be Disney and superhero-themed escape rooms run by the Boy Scouts of America. 11:00 to 1:00, the Chelmsford Cooperative Nursery School Winter Carnival will be going on from 11:30 to 3:30 Chowder Fest at the Senior Center. 12:00 to 3:00, Junior Church is going to be on the Common, sponsored by the Girl Scout Troop, 68172. 7:30 that night, the Chelmsford Center for the Arts will have a Beatles tribute. And then on Sunday, the 3rd, from 2, at 2:00, the Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust is going to have a smorgasbord winter walk at Bartlett Park. 2:00 to 4:00, the, at the library, the Chelmsford Cultural Council will have their annual Winterfest photography contest. And that's, again, continued from the prior day. 2:20 to 3:30, there'll be free skate at the Chelmsford Forum. So that's the list of things you can do that weekend. Pretty full schedule. I've done the Chowder Fest before, it was fantastic, so.
All right, now we have open session. Anyone from the town who would like to speak on any matter is welcome to the podium.
Hello. Hello, my name is Bob Myers, I'm from 7 Pine Hill Avenue, and I'd like to talk about the upcoming spring special town meeting. There's a couple of warrant articles in place. Mr. Cohen mentioned at the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday that a special town meeting was called to address the small animal regulations. Is that the only reason that that special town meeting was called?
Yes. At the time, yes. At the time, that was the genesis of the meeting because the Board of Health has to address the licensing issues for 2019, since that was the motivating factor. A couple of other items have been added to that meeting, but that was the purpose of holding the meeting at this time, yes.
Okay. The Finance Committee didn't mention the cost of holding a special town meeting. Is anyone on this board aware of what it costs to hold a special town meeting and why it couldn't have waited until the regular spring town meeting?
The answer for a special town election is very expensive. A special town meeting, your only costs are the use of the facility, which we own, and the presence of council, and whatever utilities you're using that evening. And you have some check-in tellers, so you're in the hundreds of dollars for that special town meeting because, you know, we own all the equipment for the town meeting, we, there's no special ancillary services brought in for that town meeting. But the reason it was done now and not waiting till April, as I mentioned just a moment ago, it's a licensing issue. The Board of Health needed to address licensing issues for 2019 calendar year. In the consultation with town council, as we were trying to address the situation that arose over the improper permits that were issued in 2018, it ended up in a prolonged discussion about, which ultimately terminated in the adoption of new regulations by the Board of Health through a series of public advertised hearings, and the development of a special town meeting warrant article to address the zoning aspects, to bring hopefully everything into compliance. And whatever happens, whatever the outcome of that town meeting is on February 4th, will then guide us going forward for the year. So the whole timing issue was central to the Board of Health being able to issue permits because the problem is, is you really couldn't wait till the end of April because at that point, what was the town to do with licenses and applications that were really renewed in January, but at this point had been held back to slightly beginning of February to address the licensing issue? So that was the reason it was done at this time. And again, that was a coordinated effort that really arose in my office with town council president, the health director, myself, just sort of how are we going, and the building commissioner in terms of the zoning enforcement, in terms of how do we move forward in the year 2019? And then we brought it to the selectmen to request that they call a special town meeting so that we could act appropriately and timely in 2019.
Excuse me, as it turned out, we would have had to have a special town meeting because of the solution to the arbitration award?
Yeah, in the past, we've done that, but this, but once we knew this meeting was timed, we're trying to, and we still haven't got the decision. We were speaking, we then reached out to the arbitrator and said, "Look, you know, can we get a decision by this February 4th deadline?" And to date, we don't have it yet. It's been, you know, we're hoping to have it this week, so yes.
Thank you. I spoke to Sue Rosa at the Board of Health a couple of weeks ago when I was dropping off the signatures for my warrant article, and I asked her how many people are affected by this zoning. She said there were 11 individuals, and five of them no longer have chickens, so we're talking six individuals. And I'm just curious why we called a special town meeting for the benefit of six individuals?
Well, I'll answer that, because again, I'll take responsibility because I requested the board in consultation with council they have the meeting. There may have been six individuals who had improper licenses, but during the course of this process, we discovered that there were a number of people across the community who had chickens and other small animals without licenses. So the answer of six may be correct technically in terms of improper licenses in 2018, but the number of that is a multiple number of that, of people who have small animals, most commonly chickens, without licenses. So we, therefore, we saw it as a broader issue. And I think certainly since that time, it's become evident that this issue goes beyond six people. It involves, I would, without exaggeration, probably involves dozens of people in the community who are impacted by this, some of which, unfortunately, you know, have, you know, have acted in anticipation of this town meeting, others of which are waiting a resolution by this at town meeting.
Ms. Rosa told me that there was three people waiting for a resolution, three additional applicants. So I'm not sure where you got the number of dozens, did that come from the Board of Health?
Because there are other people who did not have chickens. So when, again, when you speak of the people who were properly granted license, a number of them...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm speaking of all applicants for 2019.
Again, I wish if you had, if you had these concerns, we could have asked Sue to attend this meeting, okay? Rather than speaking about what you said to Sue, and what I said to Sue, and what have you. But what I can tell you, in my opinion, this goes beyond three individuals. This goes, there were, as you said, there were a number, that was twice that or so, who had improper licenses, many of whom got rid of their chickens or small animals. But again, there were others who did not have licenses who had poultry and other small animal livestock that I think are impacted. And I think we also heard from, at this last meeting, from the owner of the Agway at Thursday night's meeting, that there were more than just a handful of people based upon the evidence that she's seen in terms of her sales and activity at her establishment. So that's the evidence that I have to address your concern that this only involves three people.
You know, I should add that, based on the rules in the town as they are now, you have to have 40,000 square feet. Nobody else can come forward because only 20% of the town has 40,000 square feet or more. And therefore, those who may be interested are locked out right now until town meeting acts to change that, if they so choose.
You're standing in front of someone who's waiting, right? I mean, as everybody knows, I lost my chickens. Are you one of the six remaining individuals?
No, I don't, I didn't have, I had illegal, non-permitted chickens, not realizing you needed a permit, so I gave them up. So now I'm waiting for this to get decided, to figure out whether I can get my chickens back.
Was the special town meeting done at your behest?
But, no, not at all.
No.
And you, I think you know it wasn't, but...
Just asking for the record, Ken.
Well, to that end, I think, you know, in talking with a lot of people, we've seen them at the police station, you, I would probably, Paul said dozens, I'd probably say hundreds of people in this town that I, I mean, you can drive around neighborhoods and spot chicken coops. My neighborhoods alone, I think there's three or four where people have given up their birds in anticipation of this and want to know, "What's the new zoning regs going to be? Can I get them back or not?"
Now, I attended all of those Board of Health meetings that you're talking about, and I remember seeing six couples is about right, so where there's dozens or hundreds, I'm not sure where that comes from. I don't think that's accurate.
Well, I would go as far as to say if you drove around this town and counted empty chicken coops right now, you'd, and I don't know how Agway has 20% less sales or whatever it is, when, I mean, they sell thousands of pounds of chicken feed a week. I mean, those numbers have to come from somewhere. They're selling them to somebody, and those sales have stopped. So I think the concern's bigger. I think it's probably, maybe I'm over-exaggerating, but you're definitely under-exaggerating. It's somewhere in the middle.
I'm just relaying the numbers I got from the Board of Health.
Let me just interrupt you one minute. Open session is not to create a debate, it's to provide your viewpoint and your opinions, and we certainly will welcome all of that, but this is not really a debate.
I understand. I did have a couple more questions. During the Finance Committee meeting that was last week, they were discussing about how the two agencies, the Planning Board and the Board of Health, didn't want responsibility for small chickens to be split between boards. They didn't want Board of Health to have some, they didn't want the Planning Board to have some. But Nancy Arroway stated that staying with the Planning Board is going to be structures. There are setbacks for structures, and everything governing the building of coops, runs, and whatnot is also going to stay with the Planning Board. So we're not really achieving the objective of getting everything under one agency. And I was just wondering if everyone on the Board of Selectmen was aware of that, if we're concerned about that, or had any opinions about that.
I think they were talking about structures, that a coop is a shed or something like that. And they have rules regarding sheds, not calling it a chicken coop or whatever, but just a generic shed. But, you know, that's just generic, not specific to what the Planning Board is addressing.
Thank you. Questions came up last week during that very same meeting about where the 75-foot setback came from. That was part of my proposal. And the original current zoning is 50 feet. The Board of Health has recommended dropping it in half to 25 feet. And my 75 feet came from the fact that the six people who've been showing up in favor of chickens feel that the 25-foot setback is too restrictive, and they voiced their concerns. I went out and I got 40 signatures for my proposal. People think that 50 feet was too small. So that's where the 75 feet came from, in case anyone was interested. I don't think that that's going to be too restrictive because there's 35,000 residents in town, six or nine or maybe a few dozen want additional permits. I can't see how 35,000 people would want a chicken coop 25 feet away from them, especially in the hotter summer months with odor concerns. So I, in case anybody's wondering where the 75 foot came from, that's input that I've gotten from people in the neighborhood and people that I've spoken to. The Board of Health also has a provision to give out non-conforming permits. So once again, any setbacks that they have in their plan, they can just override it and give someone a non-conforming permit. So I don't think it's a good idea to just put everything in with the Board of Health. I believe we also need building zoning restrictions as well. And the final change was to keep small animals 150 feet away from year-round sources of surface water. I've been told that that's far too excessive, that the 50 feet that the Board of Health is proposing is adequate. But I noticed that the city of Lowell has a restriction 100 feet from water, and the town of Bilrika has a 100-foot setback from water as well. These are neighboring communities that border us, we share the same waterways. So I'm thinking that I can't see how 50 feet would be adequate. So I would ask the Board of Selectmen to consider talking to the Board of Health and having them upgrade that to at least 100 feet, and I would think 150 feet would be more I was looking at the Hawaii Cooperative Extension Service, and they said that one hen will produce 130 pounds of manure in one year. The six hen minimum that's proposed by the Board of Health would create 780 pounds of manure. That's over 3/4 of a ton every year. And for people who have the 20 hen maximum, that would create over 2 and 1/4 tons of droppings per year. I think the setbacks from water at 50 feet is inadequate. I think there's no way you could compost something like that on a small suburban lot. I think Chelmsford has not been an agricultural community for decades. I think we're more urban in certain areas of Chelmsford than we are suburban. So I think it's important that we do have a more serious setback from water than just the 50 feet that Board of Health is proposing. The Chelmsford stormwater budget I noticed was $500,000 for this year. Is that correct, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, it is.
And for next year, it's going to be 887,000?
Yes, that's correct.
That sounds correct. I can't see how we can justify keeping chicken coops and other small animal structures with droppings only 50 feet from water when we're spending all this money trying to clean up our waterways. I'd like every member of the board to consider that as well. And that's all of the thoughts that I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed Buckley, 27 Buckman Drive. Say hello to the board tonight, and thanks for letting us speak. I'd like to remind everybody here tonight how we got here and why we're at this point. And it only took one negligent chicken owner, and it lived between me and Mrs. Jones, and it caused a rat infestation, encompassed many parts of the Westlands. We currently have six homeowners pre-existing non-conforming permits for the small animals. Seems like jumping through hoops just for, you know, six families. But during the collection of a citizen's petition, we had over 200 registered voters in town sign our petitions from several precincts, including East Chelmsford, North Chelmsford, the Westlands, all densely populated neighborhoods. Of the 200 people or so who agreed with us on our petition, only five people were in disagreement, and most of those were from South Chelmsford. They mostly have acre lots. That's something to think about, because we met a lot of people, and a lot of people in town don't believe, especially the densely populated neighborhoods suited for chickens. And I also strongly agree with the Planning Board's decision to go from 40,000 square feet to nothing at all. In regards to having responsible setbacks, most towns that surround us have zoning bylaws in place for their residents concerning small barnyard animals. And I have, I'll give you a clue here. We have the Board of Health current, now these change, these fluctuate because you're hearing different stories. Maybe going on, maybe they'll have something on the side, you know, regulated to backyards. We've been hearing some changes coming from the office. If you have no water, 25, 25, and 30-foot setbacks with an 8-by-8 coop is 2,204 square feet. That pretty much puts 80% of Chelmsford to have chickens, if a resident wanted to have one. Let me see here. Right now, the no water, 50, 50, and 50 is, with an 8-by-8 coop, is 6,264,000 square feet. So we got numbers. We're going to bring our numbers to the town meeting floor, and we'll fight our battle on the floor as far as the size of the lots. And our setbacks will be our, be our numbers. And that can all be, you know, done on the floor of the town meeting, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Dottie Jones, 23 Buckman Drive. Hopefully, I will be the last one to trouble you with our issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should sit down.
I'm sure you just don't need this one. Can't leave you out.
So what I have handed to you is a portion of the Westlands neighborhood, just a portion of it, which we were kind of looking at our area because of the problem that we happen to have. Anything green on there represents water. And if you want to look down where it says Blue Star Memorial Highway, that's 495, and if you go up to the first off-ramp to get off that yellow circle, then you will see, where is that? Should see Stedman Street there, right?
Yes.
Okay, Stedman Street goes kind of, almost at the end of this map that I'm giving you. So, all right, so now we all know where we are. Mr. Myers is down here on Pine Hill Avenue, which is just before you turned up onto Stedman Street. So that's right there on the left. And if you back yourself up and you come to that first little triangle of green down at the map, if you look up, that will be Buckman Drive. So where that little green triangle is sticking out, that's my house, right there. The house to the right is the house with the chickens, and the house to the right of that is Mr. Buckley's house. So this was just, I was playing around with the GIS maps, and I just found this pretty amazing to see, because when I looked at this, it kind of gave me the image that this looks like a little trailer park, because everything is so close and so tight, and there's no land here for anybody. So I just wanted to give that to you just as a visual, because we are, we are a very, very tight neighborhood. And the only other thing, I wanted to... And the only other thing, I wanted to let you know that I submitted an article to the local newspapers leading up to the meeting for February 4th. They have received it, but they cannot guarantee me that they will have the space to publish it before the meeting. So if I may read it to you so that you know what I submitted. Again, I tend to try to put things on a personal spin, because it's, there's always a personal side to situations.
How long is it? Time-wise, would you say?
Time-wise, probably, I don't know, six minutes? Okay? Yeah, okay? All right? Okay. This is the article as it was submitted, and they may cut it down, I don't really know. One of the articles to be voted on at the February 4th town meeting is to amend the Town Code, Chapter 195, zoning bylaw, animal accessory to dwellings. As you may recall, this was a Warren article at the Fall Town Meeting, which was removed at the last moment to be revisited at the Spring Town Meeting in April. At Fall Town Meeting, the Planning Board was requesting a change in the bylaw pertaining to chickens and other game birds. That change was to drop the required 40,000-square-foot lot size, which has been in place for 50 years and has worked until recently, to 15,000 square feet. The present setbacks are at 50 feet from abutting lot lines of residentially-used lots and at least 50 feet from any year-round surface water body. A new proposal by the Planning Board with changes regarding new regulations will be presented at the February 4th meeting, seeking a vote. I am one of the residents in the Buckman Drive neighborhood that was severely affected by the actions of one neighbor having chickens on a lot measuring 19,166 square feet without a permit. In March 2018, we started finding rats all along our properties. This continued until October, when the chickens were ordered removed. Once the chickens were removed, along with the improper handling of feed and waste, the rats removed themselves. From May through September, we found ourselves confined to the inside of our home due to the obnoxious smells that permeated the air. We were breathing, along with not knowing where the rats were at any given time. I take care of three of my young grandsons a few days a week, and this summer, this spring and summer, we were forced to stay inside, and we were unable to enjoy the outdoors, which they missed terribly. This is not news to anyone, because we have shared this heartache with the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Planning Board of the town of Chelmsford more than once. Once rats found your property, it is difficult to eradicate them. Rats don't just stay in your yard. They travel streets away, causing homeowners to hire exterminators at their own expense. None of this sounds right, fair, or acceptable to me. Those that want to have backyard chickens is fine with all of us, as long as the regulations in place are adhered to. What we are trying to explain is that it only takes one homeowner not following the proper procedures to create such a nightmare. Earlier, I mentioned that over 50 years, the bylaw in place has worked, and that is because the townspeople abided by the rules and regulations set forth, and this is not the case anymore. The simplest thing that could have happened would have been in October to vote down the proposed 15,000 square feet, keeping the bylaw as it stood at 40,000 square feet, and decide who in this town is responsible for overseeing that things are being handled properly. That would have spared the neighborhood and others, because it is not only Buckman Drive, months of agony of having to attend countless meetings in an effort to try and stay on top of the health and safety issues, which can turn bad very quickly. The Westlands neighborhood is one that is a very tight section of town, having very small lots. Removing regulations is the wrong way to go. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right. Committee vacancies. Are you going to speak on Route 40?
I'm sorry?
On Tobin. On Tobin. Are we having an open discussion?
I haven't speak at that time, when the Board takes the
It would be better if you brought
To wait? That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? No. All right. Committee vacancies, Ken?
So currently, the town has the following vacancies. The CCA Advisory Committee has one vacancy. The Civic Committee, four open vacancies. Community Action Committee, Community Action Program Committee, one seat available. The Council on Aging is three associate member positions available. The Cultural Council is looking for 21 individuals to volunteer. Energy Conservation Committee, four. The Holiday Decorating Committee, three. The Middlesex Canal Commission is looking for two volunteers. Parade Commission will accept all that apply. Personnel Board, two seats available. Public Celebrations Committee has five open seats. Recycling Committee has two open seats. The Sign Advisory Committee is looking for three volunteers, and the Skate Park Committee is looking for two volunteers. If you're interested in serving on a Town Board Committee, please apply at the town website, or you can contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5201. Thanks.
Thank you. We have one license tonight, one-day-all-alcoholic beverages license for St. Varden's Armenian Church for March 2nd for their Mardi Gras dinner. Anyone here from them tonight? I know they have frequently come before us. There's never been an incident there.
This is an annual, right? So I'll make a motion to approve the one-day-all-alcohol beverage license for St. Varden's Armenian Church at 180 Westford Street for March 2nd, 2019.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. We have some reports and presentations. Bill Askenberg is going to be reporting on Roberts Field tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to provide this quick update on the Friendship Park Playground Budget and fundraising, and then finally to talk a little bit about our final fundraiser. So this is Friendship Park, the new inclusive Friendship Park, and as most of you probably know, it was opened June of last year. The DPW finished up some of the work in the fall, and they're gonna start back working on it in the spring. And we expect that things like the shade structure, some of the grading and the seed, seeding and loam that needs to go down will be finished in the spring, and then we hope to have a dedication ceremony in the summer, and we'll work with you guys to develop that. But you can see from this photograph that, sorry, that the fencing and all was put up, and it's a good overview of the playground. Sorry, next slide. So I worked, we worked with Darlene Lucier and Steve Yonley to compile the expenses that the town has incurred so far in developing the budget, and right now, it's a pretty complete list. The expenses are at $501,000. There is about $9,000 still pending for the installment of a shade structure that's on-site now, a gate for the fence, and then we need to do a redesign on the sandbox. We have some issues with, the ground is so compacted that the water won't drain out of the sandbox, and what we have now is a splash pad. Not a very clean splash pad, but a splash pad. So we're looking, the DPW is putting together some numbers and to see what we can do with that. So that's, depending on how that nets out, we'll see where that comes, where that comes in. But according to Steve, the remaining projects will be, all be completed under the DPW budget. So again, we're looking at a $501,000 in expenses right now. I also wanted to point out that the value that the town has received is in excess of $620,000, and that takes into account the sweat equity that the community put in place for the community build of $40,000. The value that the DPW brought in using their employees and machinery to install the playground, that was estimated between, to be between $75,000 and $90,000, so we took the lower value there. And then in-kind donations from other sponsors, different activities and things that have gone on. We have $11,000 there, and we expect a few more to come in. So in total, you're looking at a $628,000 playground, but for a hard cost of $501,000. Any questions on these numbers? Yes?
What is the amount that Town Meeting authorized to fund this?
So for the CPA fund, it was up to $450,000. And Darlene has been tracking that, and the offset, the difference between the $450 and the $500 was paid for by fundraising, and we'll get into that in the next slide. Next slide. So the Friends of Roberts Field was charged with fundraising for the new playground, and to date, we, being the chair of the Friends of Roberts Field, we've delivered over $660,000 in value. And the way that that breaks out is that we raised $160,000 in total community investment, right? And $108,000 of that was spendable income. I didn't want to say cash, but it's spendable income that to offset the charges. And the rest was things like the community build labor and also the in-kind donations. We also have, with the help of the state Chelmsford delegation, been put on the environmental bond bill where Roberts Field is in line for $500,000 to finish the job. So the total master plan estimate for the cost for doing the playground and redoing Roberts Field was about a little less than a million dollars. So with this extra $500,000, we'll be able to fund the entire project. So that's really good news. And we're gonna head a lobbying campaign in February to try and get Chelmsford in line with that capital plan where they allocate those budgets. The playground fundraising is gonna end May 1st, and that's when the town's fiscal year is gonna end, in June, and then the CPA funding account's gonna be closed off then. So our focus right now is we've paid for the budget overage, or the overages, or the things that weren't budgeted for at the time that we met at Fall Town Meeting, roughly $50,000. So now everything else that we bring to the table is gonna be to pay down that CPA fund, right? So we have about $37,000 now in funds that we're, we could write a check for now. We're gonna write a check in May 15th, and with our next fundraiser, the Buy a Brick campaign, we could reap at least, well, we could reap between $50,000 and $60,000 on that campaign, depending on success, on how successful it is. We also have other fundraisers that we'll be doing. We have a web store that'll be up and running, and then we also have smaller things like photo sessions and things like that that are gonna be scheduled throughout. And then that's a breakout of how our fundraising efforts have unfolded so far in the last year. So again, it's $160,000 in value. Any questions on that?
Can you talk a little bit more about this potential for an additional $500,000?
The environmental bond bill, H4835, the Chelmsford delegation got us in line earmarked $500,000 for us, and now it's basically up to the state to say, it's a $2.6 billion bill, that they're not gonna fund all at one year, they're gonna fund it over different years. So our charge is to try to get us, move our place up in line.
Is that waiting for the governor to
To release, yeah.
To release the money? We haven't done too well with our $2 million on the same track.
Right, right. What happens is the authorization is one step, you need the appropriation and release, and I think what you're getting at is they often authorize more than ever gets released ultimately.
Right. You can't count on any
Right, but that's where the lobbying and efforts come in to see if, you know, we can free that money up.
And I think that, you know, we all know, like, the Center Village, the master plan called for, we got put in for a couple of million dollars on that, but this is, I think this is a different animal. We have a story. We have, you know, a lot of people have really contributed to this, not only the, not only families, but businesses and associations, the towns chipped in, we've used CPA funds, so it's really been a collective effort to get this built and funded. And I think this is now a good example that where the state can step in and sort of finish the project. We've done our due diligence, we've got a master plan in place, we know how the monies would be spent, so I think it's just a matter of trying to get our story out there, and I think, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll be successful. Any other questions on that? So our next fundraiser, our Buy a Brick fundraiser, what we're gonna be doing is selling engraved, laser engraved bricks at the new Friendship Park, replacing the blank bricks that are currently in the pathway that we installed this past, this past summer. And then we created a nice little PSA to share, not only locally, but also in the surrounding communities as well. So this will be running in, on cable access channels all around the Merrimack Valley.
And how much?
How much what?
Will the bricks be?
Oh, sorry, the bricks are $100 apiece, and they're four-by-eights. There's three lines of text, 20 characters max each, and then we can also add symbols to them. So it's a, it's a nice little, a nice little initiative to get people involved.
Hi, I'm Sadie.
And I'm Lydia.
And we love the new Friendship Park Playground. We are very excited to share that the Friends of Roberts Field have started a new engraved brick fundraiser for Friendship Park. Each four-by-eight new brick will be laser engraved with your own personalized message. You can also add a symbol to your brick with the range you choose from. The new bricks will be installed in summer 2019, and they will replace blank bricks in existing playground capacity. You can order your brick online for $100 at friendsofrobertsfield.org/buyabrick, or pick up and order from Friendship Park. Space is limited, so act fast before they're all gone. Leave your mark at Friendship Park if you buy your bricks today.
So in addition to the spots, we'll be, we're also gonna be doing a yard sign campaign, which really helped our campaign this last time. So we're feeling pretty optimistic about the Buy a Brick. So if anybody is interested in buying a brick, and I hope they are, please visit friendsofrobertsfield.org/buyabrick, or you can visit Friendship Park, and there's order forms there. And if you wanna, you can buy a brick online, or you can buy a brick through Enterprise Bank on 185 Littleton Road. And then it's gonna be installed in the summer of 2019 by Colonial Stoneworks and Landscape, and they're also a sponsor in doing that as an in-kind donation, so that helps with our, the amount of money that we can raise and give back to the town. So, any questions?
Terrific job in the end.
Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if we can, we have another outside guest here. We could take an item out of order.
Sure.
One of the items the Board had asked was an update on the solid waste collection activities, and Mike has been handling it, but we have a representative here from Republic Waste, so I'll just turn it over to Mike and ask the gentleman from Republic to come up to the voting.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Chris Messera. He's from Republic Services. I made contact with Christopher over at the MMA Conference. As many of you know, we've had some calls from folks in North Chelmsford. Unfortunately, there were two Monday trash pickups that were missed. Some of it, as you know, has been due to Cavanta. Part of it was also due recently to the holiday, as well as the inclement weather. I've spoken with Chris, and Nick Parley, our solid waste coordinator, has also spoken with Chris, and he delivered a letter to the manager last week. He has a proposal, and he is here this evening at our request, and he's happy to explain the proposal to you, as well as answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So Chris Messera, I'm with Republic Services. And our, a couple of things. One, I want to kind of maybe talk about how, what the problem was. Number two, I'll tell you what we've done to solve it, and then certainly three, open up to any questions. So our main issue has been on, see, on that Monday collection, particularly in North Chelmsford, and it's mainly been due to the Cavanta wait times, which is the disposal in-sight that we're taking the volume into. We don't own or operate Cavanta, but the wait times have been in excess of two, sometimes three hours. So our vehicles would get there, wait in line to dump. Naturally, I mean, if you can imagine, we currently run three, or we were, as of last week, three trucks daily. You know, you do the math, it's putting us back six, eight hours, you know, per collection per day. Monday, historically, has been the worst, mainly because probably the more volume is coming into Cavanta from other communities as well, it's just a higher-volume day. I know we've tried to reach out and work with them, but again, we don't own or operate it, so it's really on them to try to, try to kind of right that ship. So our anticipation was, as we kind of got through the fourth quarter and we got into the first quarter here in January, it would get a little bit better. We haven't really seen that, and we're still seeing, you know, two-hour wait times. We're not seeing the three or four hours we saw in December, but we are still seeing a couple-hour wait times. So, you know, we recognize that, you know, we can't control that problem, so, you know, we are obligated to obviously do our job in town, which we've done for a number of years. So what we've, what we've done is we've decided to just simply add another collection vehicle every single day to the town of Chelmsford. So we started that today. So historically, we've done three collection trucks. We're now doing it with four. That's clearly on our dime, it's our expense to do it, but we know we gotta at least satisfy our, you know, our side of the agreement and do that. So we did do it today, went off without a hitch, I know collection went fine. So So, you know, moving forward, we don't really anticipate any issues, and hopefully the, the end site, from Cavanta's standpoint, you know, hopefully maybe there's some reprieve down the road as they, you know, hopefully can try to kind of alleviate some of that, some of that wait time. It's not only affecting us, but any other, any other hauler that goes into that site, so. Yes, sir.
Do you know if Cavanta has signed any other additional towns of late that would, you know, increase their problems and meeting their
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm not aware, because it's, again, it's not our, not our business. My guess is no, but I, I am hearing that, you know, they're bringing in some out-of-state trash, but again, I, I don't know. You know, I don't know what they're, you know, they're permitted on a certain tons per day they're allowed to take in, so there is a cap at some point. Historically, you see, towards the end of the year, you, sometimes you see, you see these disposal sites try to ramp up to make their numbers, so sometimes you'll see that happen, or, and certainly just the volume in December, and the first part of January is heavier anyway because of the holidays. So, usually it starts to tail back, but, but it hasn't, so. But to answer your question, I, I don't know, that'd probably be a question for Cavanta.
So, it kind of just begs that question, when you say that, you know, it happens from time to time, but it seems to be consistent right now.
With Cavanta?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's been going on for probably about a year, and it's been this migration of time has, has been getting worse. Certainly into the, it probably started in the spring, and then into the third quarter, and then come the end of the year was pretty bad. It's pretty bad.
I received some correspondence from someone in the area of Main Street. Is that any kind of particular problem for you?
No, we were aware of that, but I think that is just kind of a culmination of the, that Monday collection delay.
Right, because they had quite a few days, it was very late, one night was 10 o'clock, reportedly 10 o'clock at night, and some days missed. But you feel that should not be the rule going forward at all?
Correct. Yeah, yeah, we're pretty confident just by adding the extra vehicle. It's, you know, if we get into trouble with the wait times, we know we have the added workforce there, so. And again, we, we did it today, and it, it worked out well.
Have you had any meetings with, you haven't had any meetings with them to ask them if they're taking on more? I mean, if it's affecting your ability to do your job, you know?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. So, we've, we've certainly had conversations with Cavanta, they're, they, they know it, and they're not denying it, there's no, there's actually been, there's been actually a meeting, a meeting with a lot of the municipalities, including Chelmsford was part of that meeting maybe a month or six weeks ago with Cavanta, because it's, it's affecting a lot of communities, not just you guys. They tell us they're working on it, but that's about the extent of it.
Yeah, I was, I was at that meeting with Nick Parley, and, and there were, as we said, there were other communities, the Tewksbury and so forth, and it's, as you said, it's a, their, their response is, they, it's, it's a question of limited supply with too much demand coming in, and what's happening over time is the state's not permitting any new landfills, and they're not building any additional trash, trash energy plants, and as you mentioned, out-of-state's a problem as well, because what's happening is plants, trash energy plants and landfills in other states such as New Hampshire and Southern Maine are also drying up or falling offline, and what happens is if there's a plant disruption or shutdown or modification or slowdown, then traffic gets diverted to them from another facility. And so, the, the big, long-term question is, is where, what is the solution for solid waste? Because, you know, it's a question now where Cavanta is telling us at that meeting and others, and they probably worry about it as well, because there are haulers also that can come in, they won't sign long-term deals anymore. They're looking at signing one- or two-year agreements for, for trash collection. Now, the problem becomes, and it's going to become for us and other communities, how do you amortize equipment with a two-year agreement? You know, how, if we're signing a deal with Republic Waste, and we, you know, how are you going to amortize the vehicles and, and equipment when, when, you know, you have that short of a duration? And, and that is part of the equation, and one of the earlier issues that was going on in the fall was there were some equipment malfunctions, but those have all been remedied. And so, and so the problem is becoming is when we bid the contract, or say go somewhere else other than Cavanta, the question is where do you go? The other nearby facility is the North Andover Facility, the wheel-brader facility, they, they don't have capacity either, and then, and the other solutions are, you know, hauling it out of state literally by rail, but then the problem becomes there is where does it go, and then do you have liability once it leaves? And we, the communities unfortunately saw that with the BD Waste Oil Site, that back a generation ago, they shipped out their waste oil into New Hampshire, and lo and behold, when that went under, the, the liability then came back to the town to clean up. So, the short answer is, we, we've been meeting with Cavanta. In fact, Nick Parley would be here, but unfortunately, the Board of Health is meeting concurrent with this meeting. But the bottom line is, it's, there really isn't a market alternative to Cavanta at this, at this point in time, because of the landfill and, you know, and again, imagine, you talk about unsettling issues, imagine the effort to permit a landfill in any community in Massachusetts or in this region today's age, or a trash energy plant.
Take five years.
At least, if it's even doable. I, I can't recall the last one that was newly established and permitted. And so, and then the other problem became, most recently, and probably within the last year, is the recycling market collapsed. So, what's happening is, it's now less expensive to take your recyclable materials that are burnable, even if it's, you kind of get the waiver from the state, to bring them to a burn facility, because it's less expensive than to bring them to a recycling facility because of the problems with China. So, all these things have converged, causing a real problem.
Well said, you're spot on. Yeah, exactly. And you're, we're seeing a higher, because of the collapse in the recycling market, you're seeing, we're seeing greater what they call residual value in the recycling stream, so that is inherently creating more waste because of the collapse itself. So, some of that could be feeding ultimately into Cavanta and other sites, but, you know, capacity generally, in the state of Massachusetts is a, disposal capacity is a, is a pretty big topic, you know, over, you know, long-term, we're going to be turned into more of an export type, type state.
How long is our contract bar?
It's three years.
To run, more, or are we into it for some time now?
We just started
Yeah, we're only in the first year of a three-year contract.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, when you talked about the Main Street, as you know, I live in that area, and I have had the same correspondence with the folks closer to Groton Road, and under the contract, as I explained to some of the residents, our hauler has up to 24 hours if they miss a trash pickup. So, some of them did go late in the evening, but they were able to, to at least pick them up on the same day. Last week, due to the storm, it actually took till the next morning, mine got picked up just within the 24 hours, but I did receive reports that it was just crossing over the 24 hours, and to their credit, they acknowledged that, and that's when they decided to put the extra truck on the road, so. But we have been relaying those, that information, Nick Parley and myself have been relaying it to Republic.
And that, adding the extra truck is going to allow us for a little bit of tolerance of error, whether it's, you know, there's going to be breakdowns in this industry, there's going to be weather-related issues, but by having that fourth truck, we're able to react in a lot better to that at this point.
We are recommending that fourth truck until we get things squared away, then.
We will not remove that fourth truck. At this point, we have no plan to remove it, because I don't see any, I, I'm not optimistic that we're going to see a wait time reduction in Cavanta, so I, I don't anticipate it at this point, you know?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think, as the Recycling Committee liaison, I think the issue is that, as a society, we're producing too much trash, we're not reusing enough, we're not reducing enough, we are producing too much trash. And I have this problem in my own house where, you know, you buy things like laundry baskets, and they break after a year of use, very gentle, normal use, and what do you do with a broken laundry basket? Like, is it really going to get recycled, or does it get burnt? So, if, if we can all pull together here and realize the amount of trash we produce, and work on reducing that trash, and finding reusables where we can, and, you know, switching out your paper towels to cloth towels in your kitchen, and bringing, stopping, stopping these stupid one-use, single-plastic water bottles, buy a reusable water bottle, wash it, you know, I mean, it's, it's going to make a difference if we all do it, but you've got to do that, and then you've got to put pressure on retailers too with the excessive packaging. And it, it has to be done at a community level, because we've got, we've got a population that's growing, and we're producing way too much trash. So, it's either that, or we need more incinerators in our backyards, so I think that's, that's kind of where we're headed.
Well, thank you for coming in tonight.
Oh, my pleasure.
Very appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back on track. We have Lisa Maroni here, Business Development Director, to give us an update and talk about the Small Business Grant Program. Evening, Lisa.
Sorry about that. If we all remember to bring our reusable, we can save so much trash.
Anyone want to reuse, reuse my cup here, or?
I usually have mine.
Good evening, Sel Ekman. Thank you for your time. And for those of you that don't know me, I am Lisa Maroni, Director of Business Development for, for the town of Chelmsford. I'm here to present to you my year-end review. So, here's my general agenda here, just so you're, you're aware of the world of business development, all of these topics, topics are intertwined with each other, all of these mechanisms work together and affect each other, changing environments, dynamic relationships, and I'll be speaking about each of the topics, and then presenting a little bit of some exciting plans for 2019. This is a listing of agencies and organizations that I've participated in for the year of 2018. I was hired on January 3rd in 2018, so it's pretty much a 12-year review. Some of these organizations are familiar with Town Contact, but some are new connections that are learning what our community is all about. We are utilizing all of these contacts, but further pushing the message about Chelmsford into each of these networks as well, and more. I'm continually introducing Chelmsford into business discussions, what we have to offer, and how these agencies can benefit from development opportunities here. I have established well over 1,000 business contacts and emails through my previous work and my current work here. These are real connections, we did not purchase a data mining database, we've developed these between the Chelmsford team, Evan Belansky, myself, my colleagues, but I have personally met with many of the contacts. So, this allows us to delve deeper into layers of networking to promote Chelmsford business opportunity, create and present a positive environment for business development. We are talking about new membership with NAOP, which is the National Association of Industrial and Office Properties, so we'll talk more about that later in my presentation. I'm not sure if you could read this. These are companies that have either moved into Chelmsford or expressed interest in a Chelmsford location with expanding their business into our community. Many of them include ribbon-cutting events and media coverage, some of them have purchased business properties, but all of them have received my time and attention on efforts towards building a relationship and a better future for Chelmsford business environment. This is about the town's image, the expedience of starting up a business here, the ability to prosper here, the perception that we provide an atmosphere that's conducive for business success in Chelmsford. Private business investment drives the economy, and these are the numbers that enable the town to secure public funding, matching funds and grant awards. We are proving ourselves as a place for the high probability of success, and this is some of the businesses that, that have moved in, and, and it's, it's a great list of combination of small business, medium, and, and large businesses. My efforts also provide directors in support to all businesses in Chelmsford, new and longstanding, that may need resources for planning, lending, programming, and networking. I am bringing added value to a purposeful link with the town of Chelmsford. Any need that a business may have, I am the person that they should call. If I don't have the information they need, many of my business contacts or my business networks are available to provide support. Outreach, technical assistance, and business retention are part of my daily work, and these are a few of the businesses that I've personally met with as well. This might be a tough list to see, I apologize for that. Promoting Chelmsford goes beyond marketing and advertising, it's about educating and bringing awareness to what our community has to offer. I am creating new partnerships that may not seem important now, but could become very significant at some point. Establishing a rapport takes, takes time. It involves a trust factor beyond just conversations, building a working relationship that brings transparent conversations that are then supported by action. The town's effort to create zoning overlay districts, followed by the new position for business development, the permitting guide, the business survey, efforts towards 129, and others. I am now receiving phone calls on referrals from other entities advising, advising businesses to contact me for development discussions, and developers and realtors, and the, the system is starting to catch on, and I'm, I'm becoming extremely busy. Here are some of the efforts made to promote my role on behalf of the town of Chelmsford. These appearances have brought about some insight on my involvement with the business base and ongoing projects. Many larger businesses were not aware of the local access for telemedia, that includes government business and town information, so as I network and interact, I've been bringing their attention to the resources, and they are very happy to be able to follow along with the local government happenings and, and stay involved, and it's been, it's been a great collaborative effort. Chelmsford Telemedia does an excellent job. These are just a few of the other outlets for press coverage and ways to promote the positive happenings in the business world of Chelmsford. We are encouraging companies to contact me to celebrate their milestones, their awards, their achievements, so that we can promote their longevity and contributions within Chelmsford. So, we've been trying to have a blanket approach to just pushing positive business achievements and, and information out, out into the, out into the community, so these are some of the methods that we've been, that have been involved in. Site visits, all of the new businesses and partnerships that I've connected with are include site visits. I've also integrated with all of these companies as well at the site visits. We might basically ask some general questions, but if there's anything the town can do to better support their businesses, we discuss tools and programs that are available to them. Zoll Medical, for instance, is a major employer in Chelmsford. They were, their lease was expiring, and we started to reach out and build a relationship with them earlier last year, and learned along the way that they were contemplating other locations outside of Chelmsford. But we thankfully can report they have purchased their current location. It's pretty significant. They employ several hundreds of people. That would be something that we certainly want to promote and advertise to help bring awareness of what, what Chelmsford is all about. We've had quite a few visits at Zoll Medical, and they've become a, a great partner of the town. Also Endeavor Robotics, we, they were recommended for an Economic Impact Award through Mass Econ for their investment, their expansion, their job creation. You know, there's a lot of businesses here that are not familiar with my role. It's taken a little bit of effort to make contact and, you know, get into some of these companies. I've been bringing a, a small group of people with me, some of them are in the room today, and it's been really insightful and enlightening to, to see the, to see the process, and I just wanted to create a short list here. Just on Friday, we were at First Light Diagnostics, a really amazing company that chose to move into Chelmsford, and they're prototyping diagnostic tools that reduce the testing for very serious infection diseases from three or four days down to three or four hours, so that patients can, can get well quicker and minimize the impacts, and, and some of that's happening right here in Chelmsford. We have a lot more life science and medical and biotech than, than, you know, we are aware, so I've been trying to get into those companies. Waddington North America was recently acquired and purchased by Novalex. We had quite a few visits there, but I'm in continual contact with that company, they're a very large employer, and that's another excellent partnership that we have as a resource as the town, as well as for them to contact us. AutoGuide recently moved to Chelmsford, they're an advanced R&amp;D testing center. AutoGuide recently moved to Chelmsford. They're an advanced R&amp;D testing center for robots that help construct and build automobiles. So they have a second location in Kentucky, but they chose to move in to Chelmsford. I've also listed, I've connected with hundreds of business tenants through the business survey. I've gone door-to-door down Chelmsford Street, Littleton Road. I've listed the locations here, Fletcher Street, Princeton Street. My business card has been handed personally by me to hundreds of business tenants. I think I've gone through 2,000 business cards last year. So I'm really doing all things possible to integrate and connect. This is a list of projects that I'm working on. 129, as you know, is a major focus for my role. We are very close to releasing our website, our video commercial. Those should be completed next month. We are also holding a second stakeholder meeting in February to provide an update of all of the efforts of the Site Readiness Grant. Site readiness includes tenant inventory list, infrastructure map, existing conditions report. We are about 30% of the way through for the site readiness grant, so there's a lot more information coming out soon. I'll be sharing that with you. The Chelmsford Small Business Grant was released last week. I have a separate presentation that I won't be presenting, but it's available to anyone interested. This grant provides $40,000 to the business community, offering increments between $2,000 and $10,000. Currently, we have 14 applications right now. The deadline is at midnight tonight to apply, and I will be reviewing the applications along with a partnership of the Merrimack Valley Small Business Center. The Shop Local effort is underway. We started last year with an effort on Center Village, and we hope to grow that next year. The age-friendly Chelmsford, I'm a part of that, to involve businesses to understand and be a part of training their staff so that they can accommodate patrons and families dealing with autism, Alzheimer's, PTSD, any types of mental illness. The business survey went out very successful, sent it out to about 1,200 emails, and I have those details available for anyone that might be interested. We'll be using that to address some of the one-on-one submittals and technical support for businesses. I'm almost ready to release the welcome packet. The permitting guide's pretty much complete. We're just formalizing that for different formats of the website and in print. So Trades Show booth, we've been talking about that quite a bit to help me get into a larger arena and reach out further than just, you know, a 30-mile radius. So we've been talking about that and attending some trade shows. I've got my business development newsletter, which will be released in the next month or two, and I have started the process of elevating Chelmsford's biotech rating to the highest rating possible, which is platinum. We're currently at a gold status now, and we have pretty much everything in place to reach the highest rating. It's a paperwork process. So a few other things I've done is I've been invited to Chelmsford High School to speak to some of their classrooms on economics, civic engagement, those types of things, and there's probably a few more other special projects in there, but mostly I just wanted to highlight those. And I just want to say thank you for choosing me to be the first Director of Business Development for Chelmsford. It's been a great year last year, and I'm very excited about 2019, and I appreciate the opportunity to work hard for the community. Any questions?
What do you see as your greatest challenges going forward?
So one of the greatest challenges is understanding the property owners on 129 and their future plans for properties. We are a little bit at the mercy of some of those large buildings for owners to invest in the sites. You know, we're doing all the things that we can to bring attention and interest into the properties. Most of all the feedback that we've had for interviews and also research is that the town's doing everything possible. There isn't one thing more that we could be doing, is what we've been told by the landowners, by the tenants, by the state agency that's helping us. So it's more that those properties are in a very large portfolio of Boston-based firms that are not necessarily seeing that as the highest value of property to invest because the buildings are aged. They're, you know, 25 years old or so from the 80s, and it'll take significant upgrade to make it aesthetically pleasing to get a major tenant in. So what, we're kind of in holding pattern, waiting for tenants to show interest before fitting up the space. But what we're finding is that Chelmsford easily fills up, as you saw on OmniWay, 24 and 6. They fill up space real quick. Chelmsford has a reputation of being a great place to grow business, and I'm talking about 30,000 to 50,000 square feet. Those buildings are 100,000-plus square feet built for a single tenant. It's a lot harder to find an occupant for that amount of square footage, but we're starting to have conversations on how to break down that space and utilize it better, which means investment either in combination by the property owner and a tenant or one or the other. So it's been a bit to just get everyone to the table to have these discussions so that we are not pushing in the wrong direction. But those property owners are pleased with Chelmsford. They don't feel like we could be doing anything else to present our community and present our town as a great atmosphere to conduct business. I think it's really just a matter of time, because they are telling us, and we see it, that there's continual review, continual site visits and interest in the buildings. It's just that chicken-and-egg situation. They're constantly showing that space to interested tenants. It's really between the negotiations of the property owner and the tenant where we've tried to be at that table, but we are in continual contact and trying to be an important partner in that process.
It must be a major problem for you, the fact that they won't sell any of those buildings as well. I mean, that's gotta be...
I think if they were to list them on the market, they would have sold yesterday.
Right. I think it's very tough for you to deal with.
Yeah. It's a little frustration, but the encouragement is that the buildings still show well. I don't know if you've had a chance to be in any of them, but, you know, from the outside, they look, you know, like a typical office building, but I was pleasantly surprised that they still show well. They have a lot of great potential. It's that we're competing with, you know, the Boston market is the tough one.
Speaking of that, were you aware, I mean, I know you were aware of today probably with Paul Puma, but I mean, you know, they've just moved out of Westford. Were you aware of, I mean, you start about competing with the Boston market, I mean, they're moving to Somerville now, right?
Yes, we're all feeling that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so it's...
Is it because of transportation? Is it because of, I mean, the labor market?
It's a little of everything. It's the workforce housing, which we're working on. It's the zoning, which we've done.
Right.
It's the awareness. You know, I do find that I'm meeting with a lot of construction firms that come and visit here, and we sit and talk, and they too feel like we've got great things to offer, but I think it's pushing that into those deeper networks, because they're not necessarily thinking of Chelmsford as the first place to look. But once they see the highway infrastructure, the connectivity here, the housing, the welcoming by the town, they're very pleased with it, and, you know, and I still have yet to start with our marketing campaign. It's just been conversations and phone calls and in-person meetings. So once we can get our website going, I think you'll be very pleased with the commercial that we've put together. It's a three-minute testimonial commercial from business owners in town, property owners, drone footage. I think you'll really like it.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you see any increased opportunities for grants in the coming year?
I do. I feel that a lot of that, grants are very, very competitive, and a lot of what puts you in a different category is being able to present your project or your case by backup, by statistics. And I think we've got a lot more information that we have now that we didn't have a year ago. My role being new to the town and new to business, I think it adds another layer to give us a competitive edge and an advantage that maybe some other towns don't necessarily have. But in grant applications, we've got some pretty impressive grant applications last year, and I can only, you know, surmise that it's just gonna get better going forward, reaching for grants. Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I mean, as the liaison to EDC, I get the updates every two weeks when you go to EDC from Lisa, and the list is impressive. I think watching the last year, I can understand your frustration, and the meetings would come out, and so I think, you know, congratulations, you made it a year. You've done, you know, I think, a great job after getting those updates every two weeks. Anybody who doesn't go to an EDC meeting, I'd encourage you to attend one, to actually sit through it and see the results week, well, every two weeks as they come forward, because it is impressive.
Thank you.
And, you know, I do understand your frustration, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. We have recommendations to make on special town meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you recall at our December 3rd meeting, I gave you an update on some of the traffic counts on the Rotten Road, Swain Road, Main Street area. And when I left that evening, you and several other Selakman had some questions. You tasked me with going off, you had approximately 10 questions, and I tried to get as many of those answered for you for this evening. One of the first questions that we had that evening, Selakman Dixon wanted to know the history of the truck exclusion on Route 4 between Route 3 and Route 495, and I had help with almost every one of these answers, primarily our DPW Engineering and the Police Department. I've been working with all of those departments to get these answers and to look for solutions. But Steve Yonely was able to find an old email that came in during the Golden Cove that came in from Mass DOT that when Mass DOT was the Department of Public Works in 1972, they had given the town a limited nighttime exclusion for trucks on North Road between Route 3 and Route 495, which was made into a full-time exclusion in 1976, and it's been in place till this day. However, as I've indicated in the past, in 1995, the DOT determined that they would no longer allow for heavy commercial vehicle exclusions on numbered state routes. So the history of this was we got it almost 40 years ago, and that's the reason why we can't do one on Route 40 today. One of the other questions we talked about was the Swain Road, potential Swain Road exclusion for heavy truck and commercial traffic. So I had some conversations with Mass DOT representatives at District 4, and they acknowledged that our pursuit of such an exclusion in this area is gonna be difficult. And when I gave them the specifics, they had suggested that we employ an independent traffic engineering firm, and I did look at some in the area, and unfortunately, some of the reputable local ones have done projects for the asphalt plant and before the Westford Planning Board, but I did solicit a quote from a reputable area engineering firm, and they indicated without doing any of their own independent traffic studies, if they relied on some of the NIMCOG data, they would be able to help us prepare and go before Mass DOT for about $8,500. This is just to give you a background. You also asked me to look at whether or not we had any utility easements up in the area of 248 Dunstable Road. And the reason, and the rationale we got into that conversation was if we pursue and are fortunate to get the exclusion on Swain Road, we have to provide a viable alternative route for these trucks. And as you may recall, looking at a map, if we exclude Swain Road, the only real alternatives are to have the trucks go up Route 3 to exit 34 and then come back down on Dunstable Road, which would be a preferable alternative to having them go down Route 40, go into Vinyl Square, and come up Dunstable Road. And I might just add, speaking with Chief Spiny and Lieutenant Spence on this, the chief said that they have some concerns, what will happen, whether we'll have some unintended consequences if we do get a truck exclusion on Swain Road, because they think it's gonna create congestion in the square for one. But it's come up in more than one conversation I've had with not only the police, but other departments. If we were to make these improvements at Dunstable and Ledge, would we actually be inviting more trucks to come in to service those businesses? So I did speak with the town engineer, and he'd indicated that he could find no evidence of any easements for utility or otherwise at the corner of Dunstable and Ledge, that being 248, that it appears that that pole is just in the right-of-way there, so there wouldn't be any issue of moving it within a particular easement. I did speak with our engineering department again to get some information relative to widening that corner, and the initial estimates that came from our town engineer was a cost somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000, and that may include some of the costs for us to move the pole. However, I had several lengthy conversations with National Grid, our regular representative, Susan Griffin, who comes in from time to time, and she felt if we can bring this in under a roadway improvement project, they would absorb the cost of moving the pole. However, we did initiate a work request, and I was hoping they would get back to me with some estimates of time, but I did not get those prior to this meeting. But I will say, most of the estimates that I'm getting are indicating they wouldn't be able to do any type of work till the warmer months. So if we were to start to build a timeline, we would have to apply for a truck exclusion, go before Mass DOT. Once we get that, then we would have to look at funding and then get the cooperation with National Grid, so it could take some time. As you know, we've had some complaints at the end of Main Street about trucks. I did speak to NIMCOG. They are going to put Main Street on their list to do some traffic counts, but again, they will wait till later in the spring when the weather is warmer, and they have a more accurate picture of the trucks, because at this time of year, especially with the cold, very few vehicles would be going up looking for construction materials, and so they want to have a more accurate reflection of what the traffic picture would look like. So I also spoke to DPW about traffic calming measures for Main Street, and because at this time, we do not have any crosswalks, or, excuse me, sidewalks, having raised crosswalks would not be anything that we could do. In lieu of that, what we could look at is doing what we call a speed hump, which is similar to what we have behind the library. And the estimates, according to DPW, could be anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000 per raised hump. However, if there are drainage configuration issues, he said those could easily double. But the good news is Main Street is on their list for future traffic improvements, which would include sidewalks, and they said at that time, given the current nature and structure of Main Street, which is wider than most of our other residential roads, the sidewalks would bring the road in, they would be restriping, and it would actually provide some traffic calming. But he could not provide, this is Assistant DPW Director Steve Yonely, he could not provide a timetable for the construction at this point in time, but it is on their lists slated for improvements. I also followed up on the question about weight, because there were some questions about the trucks and the weight and the loads going across the roads. I was informed that whenever DPW does build a road or do road improvements, that they follow DOT specifications with regard to the materials, and that the only time that you would see a weight restriction is if there was something affecting the underlying culverts. We currently do not have any signage on Ledge Road. There is a small covert, but because of the... have any signage on Ledge Road. There is a small covert, but because of the nature of the construction, as well as the roadway materials, it doesn't need a sign because there's no weight limitation. It's been built to proper specification. There was a question, is how do we verify the weights of any trucks that are coming across our roadways? I did speak again with the police department, and they in turn spoke with Mass State Police, which has a truck team. They do have portable scales. They typically like to do their weighing of trucks in an area such as a large parking lot. They can pull them out. So, space and location for pulling trucks over in the Ledge Road or Dunstable Road area would be a bit difficult. They do need some heads up, and they prefer to do any, that type of work in late spring or early summer. The difficulty would be ensuring that we could do that without people becoming aware of what we're doing. You know, you didn't want to get the word out that we're going to be weighing trucks, because obviously trucks would avoid the road, or they would avoid any load issues at that point in time. I did get additional information from Deputy Director Yonely that they would try and fix that information, that end of Swain Road that we currently have some flaring, which may have been caused by the trucks going back and forth. But at this time, there is no other weight issue that they're aware of. One of the other points that came up was jake braking. As you may recall, we did have a couple of calls. I had looked into what some other communities had been doing. I copied a couple of the samples that I had received, and I'd sent those off to Town Council, who is here this evening. He did inform me that the town, through the Board of Health, under a noise pollution regulation, could look into prohibiting the use of jake brakes in town. So, that's something we'll have to work with, with the Board of Health. I only spoke to them recently, and they wanted some time to look at that. The last issue that we also covered was what we can do up on Ledge Road with regard to an enforcement action. And the reason we talk about this is, for the same reason the chief brought up, the unintended consequences. Even if we get a truck exclusion on Swain Road, that may divert the trucks from the Main Street area and going along Route 40. But the trucks are still going to want to come and go onto Ledge Road so that they can get access to the quarries and any of those businesses that are up there. So, all we would be doing is, much like when you dam water, it goes somewhere else. So, the truck exclusion will not limit the number of trucks on Ledge Road. What we then have to determine is whether or not we're at a point where we feel that there is an enforcement action through the building inspector, whether the number of trucks that we're documenting reach a point where it's a zoning violation. So, we have Town Council here to maybe explain that a little bit better than I have. But he could inform you as whether or not we're at a point where that's something we would want to consider.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Paul Haverdy, Town Council, Blatman, Bobrovsky, and Haverdy. We have had this discussion before with regards to potential zoning violations for the use of commercial vehicles on Ledge Road. The concept would be that the zoning that's in place on Ledge Road is residential. The use that they're doing is a commercial or industrial use, which is, I guess theoretically allowed on those properties in Westford. But when they're crossing from a use that is allowed as a commercial use, and then they're crossing over residential, that constitutes a zoning violation. There's a significant amount of case law on that. Harrison v. Brantree is the leading case. So, we've had this discussion before, but the issue is going to be determining who is actually the one that is causing the zoning violation. Again, to the extent that this is something that has been going on for many decades on those properties up there, it's protected as a pre-existing non-conforming use. However, any increase in the intensity of that pre-existing non-conforming use would constitute a zoning violation. But you're going to have to be able to pinpoint who exactly is responsible for that increase, whether it's one particular user, whether it's multiple users, and how are you going to enforce that? Enforcement comes from the building commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer, and it can come either, you know, on his own accord, or it can come pursuant to a request for zoning enforcement from any, you know, resident in the town. So, the question that needs to be, I guess, addressed immediately is whether or not we think there's enough information and ability to make a determination as to any one or multiple users has actually increased their historic use to the point where it now constitutes a zoning violation. And if so, do we want to have the building commissioner immediately take action? Or do we want to wait and to see if somebody actually files a request for zoning enforcement? If somebody files a request for zoning enforcement, building inspector is required by statutes to make a determination that there is either not a violation or there is a violation. And that determination now has to be made in writing. Any questions?
How do you establish the baseline of what was normal and what is beyond normal? That seems to be the problem.
It is something that would be very, very difficult, simply because you've got multiple users. Right? There is case law that's sort of similar circumstances. It's an Occam Sand and Gravel case, in which you had an existing, you know, quarry earth removal, where they had a historic use that was protected as a pre-existing non-conforming use. But over the years, they expanded it and expanded it to the point where it was determined that they were no longer complying with zoning, but by doing it with the intensity that they were doing it. And the courts agreed with the town that that was, in fact, a zoning violation. That's a much simpler issue when you're talking about one user. When you're talking about multiple users, and really the only evidence that you have available is truck traffic, and even that, it's, you know, the historical data is not necessarily significant. And you have to be able to pinpoint exactly who it is that, you know, what everybody's historic use is, what their current use is, and whether or not it's an increase. So, it's factually a difficult situation.
So, it sounds like the only recourse would be to carefully track it now in a study, and then look at it going forward and see what happens in a couple of years when...
I can speak to this. There has been some traffic counts that have been done through NIMCOG over the last couple of years.
Right. And we've seen those reports, but in terms of whether or not they were broken down by users, you'd have to get some really precise, specific data.
Correct. Because all they're doing is tracking the daily counts. And one of the problems I think you'll find is that these are contractor trucks coming in. And the only way you're really going to determine it is if you go, you're going to have to drive up Ledge Road over into the Westford side and sit right out in front and watch to see whether they're going into Newport, Graves, or Fletcher.
Yeah.
Like I said, factually, it's going to be a difficult matter.
How about on Main Street? Would that be, that would be less factual? I mean, it's not a numbered road. And I know you mentioned about the...
So, the zoning implications apply only where it's a private way? If it's a public way, you can cross from one zoning district to another. That's not a problem. It's when it's a private way, as a portion of Ledge Road is, that's when the potential zoning violation occurs.
With regard to Main Street, I think the other difficulty is that at the very end, where it meets Groton Road, we have a truck restriction on Lynn Ave. So, if we were, as one individual is asked, could we put a truck restriction on Main Street? I think you have, again, a big problem with regard to a viable alternative route, not knowing where all these trucks come from.
If they have business there, I mean, there's no, I wouldn't say there's a problem. I believe that maybe it was happening because of all the work that was being done in Westford on Route 40, and they were using Main Street. I don't see any other reason why they would, a big truck would go up that street. But if they are, I mean, you know, I mean, I've had a lot of calls from mothers, who, because there's, you know, the bus stops are right on Main Street. There's two bus stops right between the Triangle Store and Meadow Brook, say, right? And very concerned about, you know, because they have to cross the street. And the bus, you know, they're on the, you know, going towards your house, they're going up towards West Chelmsford. And the kid, they're all coming from like, what's the, the street up off Twist Road, Twist Road and then...
Waterfoot Place.
Waterfoot Place. Yeah. And there's a lot of young families in there. And so, I've had like three calls, you know, about that, from them, you know. So, I think the bump, like, you know, would help a little bit. I don't think the big trucks, you know. I think that was part of the trouble, though, was, you know, if they don't tie their back, the trailer, you know, the back of the trailer, that's, you know, when they hit the bump, that's when they make the noise, you know what I mean?
That's the problem with traffic, is you fix one problem, it's going to pop up somewhere else. If you put the speed pump here, the tailgate banging is going to happen on Main Street now instead of at the end.
But I mean, what caused the no trucks on Lynn Ave? I'm not saying we weren't, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I...
I can't recall the date, but I want to say that was 10 or 15 years ago. I don't know if it happened before you called.
Yeah, just about that time.
But the easy solution to that is, the viable alternative is they just go past Lynn Ave, down to the corner of Main Street, and turn around. So, the, to get the exclusion, the roadway has to lay or lie within, wholly within the town, or if it does go into another town, you have to have the permission of the town that it goes through. And that's one of the problems that we're going to face if we try Swain Road, because Dunstable Road crosses from Chelmsford into portions of Westford and Tingsboro. So, the question, I guess, that I would put to the board is, you know, what is it that you would like me to do? Because I think the order of operations in Town Council could let me know otherwise, is that I think we, if we wanted to pursue not the enforcement action, we could do these concurrently. We could wait and see if we get a call from one of the residents. And I anticipate at least one would call and ask for the enforcement action after Town Council's presentation. But concurrent with that, we could start the application process with the aid of a traffic engineer. Now, depending upon the outcome of that, then we could look at the options of whether or not we would flare out Ledge Road and how we would handle it at that point, so that you would take it on an incremental basis. But I think you're looking somewhere in the $60,000, $70,000 range if you get the exclusion approved, and then to do some of those improvements. It could go more, it could go less. And if you want to do some of the traffic calming improvements on Main Street, as I indicated before, the DPW said they could cost as little as $8,000, or they could cost upwards of $24,000 per calming device, given whatever drainage issues they encounter in that area.
Maybe a speed bump would be good to start with.
But that would only be on Main Street?
Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
But we still have to look at the Dunstable Road. We have calls that are coming in from Dunstable and Swain as well. So, we would have to look at whether or not we want to pursue the exclusion over there as well.
Wasn't particularly any great news in any of that.
Well, as I said, and unfortunately, I've had conversations, as you know, I live in that area, and I've had conversations with these folks that have called, because they are neighbors of mine and people I've known for years. And I sympathize with the problems they're having. I see some of the trucks coming that I've never seen before. I understand that the town has grown since I've been here by, you know, thousands of people, and industry's changed. But we are limited in many ways as to what we can do. But we can do the best that we can with the tools that we have. And as I've said to a couple of folks, you know, we have to set expectations. There's only so much we can do on some of these issues.
Is there any way, using wireless video to start tracking or recording these trucks, the size of them, and identifying them, and at least have some archive information?
At one point, I had a resident who had volunteered to do that, but they sold their home as they were starting to do this. I see. It was an individual on Ledge Road. But unless we have authorization, I don't think we could put anything up unless, in the right-of-way, perhaps on a telephone poll. But I don't know who would maintain that other than the police.
Well, why can't they maintain it?
I can inquire with Chief Spinney.
His question is, what would we do with the data? So, you film that this is ABC trucking, and then tomorrow it's ABC trucking, and the next day it's ABC and CDB trucking. But you have no idea where they're going and who they're being serviced by. And so, you know, and I guess the question is, I mean, many of the board members know, we had a similar frustration with Golden Cove Road about the exclusion and the truck traffic. And, you know, there was no, ultimately, there was no solution.
No, we instituted no trucking, and we got pulled up, we got a letter from DOT to pull it two days later.
Well, Mike, you seem to be the expert on it. What would you, doing nothing is not acceptable. What would you suggest as a course of action?
I think I would, as I indicated, incremental basis. I would look for the traffic exclusion first on Swain Road, and given the outcome of that, then make a determination on what traffic improvements we'd want to make on Ledge Road. And concurrent with that, look for anybody bringing up a violation, and we could, we could take that route. If we have one, we would investigate it and see what the viability is there.
So, the money to do that, does that come from town meeting, or is that something?
It would ultimately have to come from town meeting. But the problem is, doing nothing is not acceptable. But spending $70,000 or $80,000 and not being able to do anything is even worse. And I think that was the solution. I mean, Matt Hansen, I remember sitting in this room, you were here, George, Pat, we sat in this room, Matt Hansen, remember, spearheaded that effort on Golden Cove Road.
I remember.
And after one, what, 18 months?
I went up there mornings and sat there and counted it myself.
Exactly. And the end of the day became, it came to what Mike said earlier, you have to have a viable alternative.
Swain Road isn't going to be one. Swain Road is, I mean, it's good to fix, you know, the intersection of Groton Road, and so there's not a big bump there. But if you divert people off Swain Road, they're going to go through the square. I mean, you're going to force people to go into...
It's the same thing with Main Street as well. I mean, if we've put enough traffic calming devices, they're either going to find another way through Graniteville Road...
Where they go, though? I don't understand.
Well, I agree with you, living in that area, that the traffic increased this past summer when they were putting in the light at the intersection on Oak Knoll. This summer, I think, was unusual in the number of trucks that I saw on Main Street as well.
There's no shortcut there, or there's no business?
The asphalt plant hasn't opened yet, so we don't even...
No, they're not going to come. They're all going the other way.
Right, no, right. Be interesting to see what the implications are when that, when that takes place.
That's when the jake brake is going to come in.
And I think that's the concern about the speed hump. If you put a speed hump in, you're going to get the braking, and you're going to get the tailgating as they go over the speed humps. And now you're going to have people adjacent to the speed hump upset that you've now created a noise problem for them. I mean, as Mike said earlier, every action hasn't, you know, a reaction or an impact.
Especially at midnight, when the trucks are being, you know, they're doing all their stuff. The jake brake is going to wake everybody up.
How many times have we sat in this room and heard about the complaints on Lilton Road from the jake brakes from the aggregate plant going down Lilton Road to the Senate?
What about the relocation of the pole at the corner?
I alluded to that briefly when I mentioned that included in the engineering estimate of the $35,000 to $40,000 was part of the town taking care of that. But National Grid said if this was classified as a roadway improvement project, the flaring out of Ledge Road, they would take responsibly for the costs. I did put in a work request to have them get back to me with some calculations on time and whether or not they would be paying for it. I got the impression from our representative said it was something that would fall upon National Grid to take care of financially. What they would be looking to do is to move that pole that is at the corner of Ledge Road south, so to the other side of Ledge Road. Not only that first pole, but the second pole, given the tension that's on it. They can't eliminate the pole because it's carrying three, four primary distribution lines. So, it's not that we can get rid of the pole, we just have to move it to the other side of the street.
So, what does it take to initiate that?
I've already started the process. I've requested, I have a work request number. I'm just waiting for them to get back to me with estimates on time and whether or not they're going to absorb the cost, which they led me to believe that they would, given the fact that we're going to make some roadway improvements there.
Nothing official just yet?
Nothing official yet.
I'm sure the truck drivers would like it, because it's much easier to get to Route 3 up that way than it is to go down and around and whatever. Save 10, 15 minutes and a lot of shifting.
Google and Google Street Maps is a great tool, because we were able to call it right up when I'm speaking with the engineers out there. And several of them said to me, they're surprised that that pole hasn't been taken out by a truck yet, because it's so close to the edge of the road on that sharp corner. So, they said if nothing else, it would be in their interest as well to move that pole.
Any questions, comments? So, you keep us up to date on next development?
Yes.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're at the BOE recommendations on the special town meeting warrant articles. There are four of them, correct, Paul?
Yes.
The first article is Article 1 submitted by the planning... The first article is Article 1 submitted by the planning board, and that would remove the language as shown in strike through, which basically is removing the language pertaining to the zoning regulations for small animals, which currently now has a provision that you have to have acreage of 40,000 square feet. The planning board met last Thursday evening and had its consideration of the articles, and the majority of the finance committee recommended against this article. The planning board had its public hearing last Wednesday, and they recommended in favor of the article. So, it now comes to you for a recommendation that you'll present to town meeting on, next Monday evening.
So, this has been ongoing, obviously, for quite some time. The planning board in general feels that anything to do with the regulation of small animals should be held by the Board of Health, and therefore, it's really not a zoning question. If the Board of Health wanted to make it 40,000 square feet, that's within their prerogative. But that the planning board is not an expert in animals, and that the Board of Health is a much better place to understand the problems associated with it. Plus, the Board of Health has inspectors, in fact, they have two now, correct, Paul?
Correct.
Part of the problem that probably was created is that we had one inspector who couldn't keep up with all the inspections he had to do, so that inspection of the chickens or inspections of anything now will be greatly enhanced by having two people do it. So, the question comes down to the fact that planning board wants to be out of it, they're not seeing it should be 40,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet. It's whatever the, they feel it should be whatever the Board of Health decides is the square footage. And so, they have worked hard to come up with their own set of principles on it. I think a lot of those came from town council investigating other towns, quite exhaustive search, what works in other towns, and kind of putting that all together in presentation to the Board of Health. I think that initially, it contained one provision which people generally found unacceptable, which was a certified plot plan, and that the Board of Health eventually took that out of it, because that was a cost of $2,000, $3,000, and now they just need a simple plan for mortgage purposes. Is that correct, Paul?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe the board's actually eliminated the certified plot plan requirement yet, because they had just reopened their regulations and closed them, the hearing before. So, what they've done is they've decided administratively that they're not going to enforce that, and that'll give them time to actually go back through their regulations and reexamine that and determine exactly what will be required. I do think there are a number of options that are considered. It could be, you know, a mortgage plot plan, it could be something drawn off of the GIS. That's going to be for the Board of Health to decide.
All right, so they are just holding it in abeyance and enforcing that particular provision at this point?
Correct, because that's simply a submittal requirement. It's not a substantive provision of their regulations, just as, you know, the Board of Appeals could make a determination to waive their filing fee. Or the planning board could, you know, waive the requirement in terms of what materials are necessary for site plan approval applications, same thing.
All right, so they came up with a suggested list of setbacks, front, side, back, front, so forth, and so on, closest to water. And part of that came from your investigation, your team's investigation. Am I correct on that?
The setbacks came from the Board of Health in terms of what they wanted to see. I didn't really have the substantive input so much, that was really, you know, more of a determination for the board. What I did was help prepare, you know, the document itself, give them some ideas in terms of what other towns have done. But they had specific parameters of what they wanted to see for setback requirements.
And lots come in a variety of shapes.
Yes.
They're not all square, they're not rectangular, they can be almost anything. I had asked you to see if there was some way to determine what the smallest lot could be meeting that criteria? Did you do an investigation on that?
I did do that. That was actually quite a while ago. I was ready to have that for you when the Board of Health was initially ruling on the first draft, and I contacted an engineer, and I'm not recalling, it was not overly large, it was around 10,000 square foot, but that really didn't leave any place to actually put your coop. So, realistically, it was somewhere in between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet would have been the minimum lot area required under that proposed.
And that's a perfect lot that fit that description best?
You're presuming it's a square lot. Everything's, you know, the house located in the center, coop closest to it.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I'm having trouble with one, I don't know why. I mean, I don't, I guess I get confused a little bit.
Well, the article's very simple. They're just removing small chickens out of the zoning rules and putting it on the Board of Health.
And they clean up the language to make it more understandable.
All of it is.
That's all they did, so the, the underlying language is a new language, which would remain, and then stricken out is the key word, is they strike out game birds, a similar livestock.
So, if you want to leave it the way it, you know, the current law...
Yeah, you need a two-thirds vote to change the zoning, so the town meeting will have three choices. They can adopt Article 1, they can adopt Article 2, or if neither one gets a two-thirds vote, then the existing one stays the same, which is the language there with the strike through paragraph.
In either event, we at least have some certainty with regards to the enforcement actions.
And the bottom line is if, if Article 1 is not accepted, it simply stays at 40,000 square feet and eliminates 80% of people, homes in Chelmsford having chickens, period. That's the bottom line.
Right, that's, as it exists today, that's correct.
But you basically have a warrant article in front of you, written by the planning warrant, saying, please take this off our plate.
Right.
Because it was in conflict with the Board of Health, which...
Yep, just pointing it out.
Everybody's passing the bar.
The governing board is asking to remove it from their purview.
But the two bylaws were in conflict with each other, and that was, that was part of the problem.
And whether or not we go one way or the other, it's still going to be town meeting which decides whether or not it's acceptable. We're just moving it, giving them some idea what our feelings are, period. That's all it is. And that, you know, people will come to the mic far and against, and town meeting will weigh the pluses and minuses, and then they'll make their decision. And so, that's what all we're voting for, is to kind of just say what we think about it, and that's it. So, any more discussion needed?
I will make a motion to recommend approval of Article 1.
Well, second?
Any discussion further?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just make a comment. I'm going to vote to recommend approval of Article 1, and I do feel it needs to be put in the, in the hands of one, one board in town, not to be, not to have conflict. And although I still have heard some griping about some of the regulations the Board of Health has come up with, I'm sure they will take those into account and hopefully work them out to the satisfaction of everybody. I think it is a health issue more than it is a zoning issue, and that's where the enforcement needs to be.
I agree with, I agree with the fact that somebody should take, take this, the bull by the horns and take, you know, become the authoritative board or whatever.
The other thing to consider, too, is that the Board of Health is, can be a lot more fluid than the zoning board having to go get two-thirds vote on changes. So, if it goes wrong or something's not right, they can change the rules much quicker than...
Very simply.
Yeah, going to town meeting.
And they also have the, they really have the enforcement. I mean, if you leave it with the 40,000 square feet, the building inspector is the one who enforces the 40,000 square feet. But really, it seems from the discussion that there are some responsible chicken owners, and there are those who are non-responsible chicken owners. And the Board of Health will now have a second person who will do inspections, everyone will be permitted appropriately, they will be inspected on an ongoing basis, and if something is not done right, it will be identified early on, and won't get to the level of problems that unfortunately, a certain area of town had to live with.
Right, just because they meet the setbacks and everything else doesn't mean they'll be allowed to have chickens if they don't take care of them adequately.
That's right. So, all right. We want a roll call or want to just do an individual? Let's do it as a roll call, just so everyone will understand. Pat?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
No.
Yes.
Yes. Four to one? All right, Article 2?
Article 2 is a citizen petition article by Robert Myers. Robert spoke earlier, I don't know if he has anything further that he may want to share with you, but this is the article which goes beyond what's currently on the bylaws, as he addressed the board earlier, and would add additional setback requirements beyond what's currently in the zoning bylaw.
Is there anything you want to say additionally concerning this?
If the board has any questions that they'd like me to answer, I can step up to the podium if you'd like.
I'll make, you want me to make, I'm going to make a motion to accept Article 2.
And again, you know, us accepting Article 2 doesn't mean that it's approved, it simply means that it goes to town meeting, and town meeting will evaluate its merits, one way or the other, and we'll all abide by what their decision is.
My opinion for that is that I agree with the larger setbacks, that's all.
Anyone else have any discussion? Motion?
Well, George made a motion, but I don't think it's going to get a second.
Second to move it to town meeting? Yes, I'll second.
You need a motion to recommend against the article. George is recommending in favor.
All right, so...
There's no second, so now you, the motion would die. So, now you need a motion...
No, 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 I will second.
No, it's going to town meeting.
It's going to town meeting.
It's just whether we approve it or not.
It's what's the board's recommendation.
George is recommending...
We already did it with the vote in the first one, apparently, you know?
Right? And again, our vote is just whether or not we, we are favorable or not...
So, the way the finance board did is, is I make a motion to recommend against Article 2.
All right.
No, she didn't. I'll second that. I'll recommend against.
Against, all right. Any discussion against? All right, we'll vote, Pat?
I vote yes to against, yeah.
Yes or against?
Yes.
Yes.
Against. George?
No, I'm for the article.
For increasing the footage beyond what is...
It's leaving the zoning rules.
And just to town meeting, it just isn't advisory.
So, the only thing this does is move coops further from water?
It allows town meeting to approve it, as opposed to what's there, on their agenda.
No, no, town meeting's got to vote on this article.
Regardless of way, regardless.
So, how you vote, the difference is, as opposed to the earlier article, you've removed the 40,000 square foot requirement, this would keep the 40,000 square foot and increase the setbacks.
No, that's not what I'm reading here at all.
The setback from the year round, which is what Robert spoke early, but the year round...
Nope, that's not what I'm reading here.
I think I can provide some clarification. We're not promoting a 40,000 square foot requirement.
That's, right, so that's not what, it's for large farm animals. It's cattle, horses, sheep, hogs, goats, so big ones.
Right.
The large animals don't change on my proposal.
Right.
Thank you.
Ken, you want to just explain, vote again, what you're, what you're not, what you've...
So, I vote against. I'm recommending, I made a motion to recommend against Article 2, which, my understanding is, they're correct, the 40,000 stays on the large animals, but it increases the setbacks to 75 feet, property line 150 feet from the water. That's probably the biggest change I see in there.
And you're voting against it?
Against that.
What did the Board of Health say on this?
It doesn't matter.
On the water setbacks?
Much less.
They've established their regulations.
It was 25 feet.
Roughly half, unless...
Right, they don't, they don't make a recommendation at town meeting on the zoning articles.
They don't have to, they just set the rules. Again, it's only a recommendation.
You can abstain.
I'm going to abstain.
All right. No?
I mean, I, I think that, I mean, what I asked the Board of Health to do was come up with the science and the logic and the precedent for some setbacks, and to look at the impact of significant manure deposits around waterways, and I'm not sure 25 feet cuts it, but I don't think that 150 feet or 75 feet is the right number either, so, but...
Are you going to abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. So, again, the recommendation is against this article.
Approval of Article 2.
And I agree, I agree that I'm against the article. So, it's 3-1-1. Article 3?
Article 3 would be to fund the arbitration award between the Town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Superior Officers Union. At this time, we still have not received that award, so if it, if it comes in on the time we manage, we'd ask the board to meet the night of town meeting next Monday evening to make a recommendation, obviously, we'd cost it out and then present it to you. We have informed the arbitrator, you know, that, you know, they're aware of the imminent deadline of town meeting, and the fact that, you know, we really not want to have this thing show up at 4 o'clock on Monday afternoon, it wouldn't be feasible to cost out. You know, we have to have town meeting vote an appropriate amount, so we're hopeful to have it within the next few days.
What happens if it doesn't?
Then the, there'll be no action, and then likely will be in April, April town meeting.
Any discussion?
We don't have to make a motion, really.
No, there's no motion, there's no action.
Okay. And Article 4?
Article 4 is the Board of Selectmen article that basically would authorize the selectmen to grant an access and utility easement for the benefit of property owner identified as the assessors of Off Middlesex Street, or more commonly referred to as Occoban Avenue in our discussions. It's map 20, parcel 50, lot 4. There's an accompanying plan that we've, we have seen and discussed. And last Wednesday evening, the planning board approved a subdivision pertaining to this article. Last Thursday evening, the planning board, I'm sorry, the finance committee voted unanimously to favor of the article. And so, that's where this stands at this point, and then the warrant is a copy of the parcel and easement area.
All right, we had someone who wanted to speak on it earlier. Would you like to speak now?
Not you, Bob.
Mrs. Alves. Mrs. Alves.
I've been trying to decide exactly how much and what exactly I wanted to say. I still have the issue with the easement rights and the overburdening of the easement rights on Lot T, and issuing other easement rights to another owner over a town-owned property for a project designed for profit for this builder. And so, now my, my thought and focus comes back to the town and the assessed value of this property, and to what extent the town is going to get consideration for giving this easement. So, at this point in time, I believe that's where I'm at. I have talked to council again this morning, myself personally, and I was suggested to bring up the fact that the covenant is still in place, and that it still appears that there is no clear access from Tobin Ave to this parcel of land, even though the applicant is trying to get easement over Lot T. I still don't believe that there's clear definitive answers as to whether or not this can occur, and I think that there is more, still more to this than is just been presented to the town on all parties. Thank you. Thank you.
If, I can paraphrase it, it sounds like your objection is, has two parts. One is that the town cannot grant a second easement, that they don't have the right to do that. And the second part is, what's the compensation to the town for actually going and doing this? Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, can you talk about the first one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the issue here is what exactly the impact would be by the granting of an easement over Lot T to the party that's requesting that easement. There are a lot of prior permitting activities and documents that have been recorded in the Registry of Deeds. I understand Mrs. Alves' concerns as to how they would be impacted if the town were to grant an easement over this property. I've reviewed those documents and I don't think that there will be an impact. When the parcel was originally developed, Lot T was left, there was a roadway that was placed over Lot T accessing the Lost Drive properties, but they weren't required to build it out to its full subdivision standards. The Planning Board imposed a covenant at that time that prohibited further subdivision of the properties shown on that plan and allowed them to put in what was essentially a driveway rather than a full subdivision road. So the question becomes, what impact does allowing another property to use this easement have upon the requirements that were contained in the prior subdivision approval and the covenant? And after reviewing them, I don't believe that it has any impact. First of all, Lot T was actually still part of the subdivision when the Planning Board approved it and when the covenant was recorded. Lot T was subsequently sold to the town a year later. So what that does is, in effect, if there was any severance and any impacts, they happened back in 1988 when Lot T was separated. It's been, you know, 30 years since that's occurred, so to the extent that there was any nonconformity that resulted, they're protected as pre-existing nonconforming lots and pre-existing nonconforming structures. So granting an easement over Lot T to a different user doesn't have a zoning impact upon their properties. The question with regards to overburdening, I think there's a little bit of a mistake as to exactly what overburdening of an easement is. The owner of the property that is subject to the easement, which is known as the survey interstate, can't overburden that easement, all right? It's only the person that has been granted easement rights over somebody else's property that can overburden an easement by adding on property beyond what was actually part of the grant of the easement. So if they had a back lot behind their properties on Lost Valley Drive, that was not part of the original grant of the easement and they wanted to provide access to those lots, they would be causing harm to the town's rights as the actual owner of the survey interstate of that property. The town still owns Lot T in fee, it was deeded to them, they have the right to grant easements to other properties. The only thing that they can't do is physically impact or impair the rights of the easement holders, you know, to enjoy the benefit of their easement. So if for some reason the design of this roadway was such that they were no longer able to conveniently and safely access their property over their easement, then that would be a problem. And that's an issue, you know, that the Engineering Department took a look at and they were satisfied with. But other than that, I don't see any legal impediments to the town granting an easement to anybody that feels that they would benefit from it. The issue with regards to what the consideration for the grant of that easement is, is a completely separate issue and one for discussion between the town and the developer.
Any questions for Paul? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone like to speak concerning the second issue, which is the compensation, the benefits to the town and so forth?
Mr. Diggs, members of the board, my name is William Harvey, I represent SGC Development. I sent Mr. Diggs a letter this evening with regards to the consideration that I'm proposing. Did you receive that?
No. Thank you.
Essentially, it's the same list that we went over last week with regards to the issues of the consideration. I'll go through the first five quickly as we already talked to them. Number one is the developer shall make road improvements at the end of Tobin Avenue, as shown on the plan. That plan was reviewed by the town engineer and she had no issues. That would also be subject to that no building permit shall issue until the road improvements are complete and inspected by the town engineer. Number two, the developer shall loop the water line from John Street, which is currently dead-ended, to Tobin Ave, and that's also dead-ended. The developer shall be responsible for all costs of the installation of the water line as shown on the plan. The estimated cost for that would be about $25,000. The developer, this is, Mr. Diggs had a concern with regards to the grinder pumps, which are an excessive cost to the town for future maintenance. The developer shall have the sewer line gravity-fed to the town sewer line, thereby eliminating the need of eight grinder pumps, that the town would be solely responsible for the maintenance. So we can bring the road up a little bit, which will allow the gravity to be fed. So we've done the engineering and that's what will be done, so there won't be any grinder pumps. Number four, the developer has provided on the plan a sewer easement to Lost Valley Drive condominiums. Lost Valley Drive consists of two duplexes, total of four units. The condominiums are currently unseptic and, as of date, is not tied into the town sewer on Tobin Avenue, which would require a total of four grinder pumps. The easement would eliminate the need of grinder pumps by allowing the owners of Lost Valley Drive to connect into my private sewer line. And again, that's totally up to them whether they want to do that. It's not there for me to say that I'm forcing it, it's just out there for their own convenience. Number five, the developer will leave all healthy trees and vegetation abutting the Tobin Avenue at a minimum of 25 feet. This will provide privacy to the owners on the Tobin Street. Number six, relative to the issue of consideration, the developer has voluntarily offered to make a gift of $30,000 to the Town of Chelmsford, dedicated solely for Varney Park improvements, which Article Four passed at town meeting on February 4th, 2019. I understand that you had an executive session discussion about the consideration that's being provided, and I offered 30,000, and I believe that you counted it 50,000? Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So we can change this to 50,000, I don't have any issue with that?
If you were to do that, the monies would have to go into the general fund for a future award by town meeting in terms of what they might be used for? Do you have any recommendation of what you would like to see that money go toward?
Yes. This specifically states that the money, the developer has voluntarily offered to make a gift of $50,000 to the Town of Chelmsford, dedicated solely for Varney Park improvements. And the reason why I wanted to have that dedicated for Varney Park is because this development is in North Chelmsford, and I think that Varney Park is critical to the town and does need some future upgrades, so I'd like to have that money dedicated, set aside for improvements to the park.
All right, but that can only be a recommendation, depending on what town meeting eventually approves, but, you know, we would certainly try to honor your desire.
Very well.
Any other questions?
Is that the extent of it, Paul, that they can recommend it, just not, does it have to go to town meeting for a vote?
Yes.
So we could put forth the warrant article suggesting that that be used?
Yeah, what happens is, under the master of the general laws, unless otherwise provided, all funds to the Treasury go to the general fund, which, in our layman's terms, money goes into the Treasury, the payment comes to the town, the end of the year it gets closed out, books becomes part of the free cash, and then certified in August, and then at the fall town meeting, the board could appropriate the money, you know, recommend an article to town meeting seeking appropriation of...
Can the motion include the recommendation? The developer's recommendation is just a recommendation?
Yeah, it would be a recommendation, you can't bind a future town meeting.
Right, but just as a recommendation?
Yeah, we can note that.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
I will make a motion to recommend approval of Article Four.
Second.
Any other discussion? Pat?
Oh, we've taken a roll call?
Yes. Ken?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And I say yes, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs.
All right. At the last meeting, we listed that we wanted to have a discussion of whether to allow candidates for office to present themselves briefly at our meetings. I know it has been done sometimes in the past, other times it hasn't been done in the past. I remember that I did. I think you did, Ken?
I did with objection.
It was under duress, I think, a little bit of duress. So rather than, you know, having candidates not know whether they can come or they can't come, I thought we should have a vote on it and see if we agreed that they should or they shouldn't. Anyone have any feelings about it?
I do.
Yes.
I do not think it's a good idea to allow candidates to basically come up to this microphone and do a campaign speech, and I think that's what it basically is. It's a campaign speech announcing their candidacy or perpetuating it. Back when this was first established, which was, I believe, in the 1980s, I believe it was even Dennis Reddy, when he was on the Board of Selectmen, that he proposed it and it became kind of a tradition, there was not cable access that we have today, there was not social media that we have today, there were not all the other outlets and ways that you could get the word out that you were running and meet with people. I almost feel that it would be unethical, quite frankly, for somebody to come up and make a campaign speech from that microphone. I mean, we don't allow people to collect signatures in the audience here, we don't allow candidates to wear their buttons in the audience here, and I really don't see the difference when they would get up and speak about their candidacy from the microphone. So I think there's just so many other ways for people to get the word out now that I don't feel it's necessary, and I've never seen it done from any other board, any other town. If we're gonna do it for selectmen candidates, then maybe we should do it for every candidate in every office.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, that any candidate for an office in town has the opportunity. And my counter to that argument, and it is a valid argument in many respects, is that every meeting, we invite anyone to come up to the mic to speak on any issue that has any relevancy to the town. And I think that their candidacy is certainly relevant to the town. I don't see how you can say it isn't.
Well, then maybe they could just do it there.
I don't think they should have a long presentation, you know, a couple of minutes, just introduce themselves, a little background and what office they're running for, and that's it, not a long dissertation about, you know, whatever they want to talk about. But an introduction, I think, is warranted because, you know, you're right about there are many avenues to get the message out, but we know if you, you know, get into statistics that most people don't watch this, or they don't watch that, or they don't watch any of the Joe Reddy Show, or the new Sam Chase Show, or whatnot, and I think we should be open to having people come up. You know, they're not gonna take a lot of time, doesn't seem like there's gonna be a lot of them this time around, at least so far, and I think it's perfectly fine for them to speak a couple of minutes without feeling nervous about doing it.
Is your main objection that there are so many more avenues now that it's not necessary? And before, it was absolutely essential because this was the only venue to get word out?
No, quite frankly, I don't think even then it would have been appropriate. I believe it is basically a campaign speech, and I don't think campaign speeches should be made during a municipal meeting on any...
Yeah, there is a lot, I mean, you can't wear political pins in a town hall, you're not supposed to approach voters at the ballots, I mean, there are strict rules on that. And I'll say, you know, when I was running and I approached, it was only because I was in the audience and the person I was running against announced his campaign party from his seat and was promoting that, that I came up and announced who I was. Other than that, I probably would have said, no, you know, I sit on Pat's side of the argument here that, you know, you should really leave the political part of it out of the town hall.
But you did it anyway.
Well, it was new then, but, yeah, I thought it was tit for tat, which...
I mean, in full disclosure, I have gotten up there and spoken when I've run a couple of times, but that doesn't mean that I felt it was the right thing to do.
So I think that where local politics is so local and you're getting up there and you're saying, I'm running for whatever position on whatever committee, I think that is relevant to the town. It's not like I'm up here pulling for, you know, candidate Joe Blow at the national level.
What would prevent somebody from doing that? I mean, I think all political speech should be prohibited from that microphone.
Well, we're saying that the candidate can come up themselves, not their friends or their relatives or their enemies or whatever, the candidate themselves, just introduce themselves in short, two-minute history is fine.
Is there any, Paul, any violation? Because I know you can't, like, you can't collect signatures in public buildings, you can't...
You can't campaign within 150 feet of a door of a polling place on polling day.
Town council is here.
Paul Havens here, I'm not a Paul.
I mean, while you're here and on the clock, come on up, Paul.
I'm sorry, I was not prepared for this question, and I do not have an answer for you. I haven't looked, I am not an election law specialist.
Well, this is not a question for, that has to be done tonight. Can you just briefly give it a...
Absolutely.
...once over?
I don't want to step in anything.
You know, it's not a, you know, it's a simple, relatively simple thing, whether it could be permitted under...
My guess is there is no prohibition.
Yeah, it's not campaign finance, that's what it would be.
Correct. I don't, I would be shocked if there was anything that was specifically prohibiting it, but I can take a look.
Well, he did it for 30 years, so, I mean, they would have caught something along the way.
Not necessarily.
I actually, I was asked by the board, because I came up to speak about something unrelated, and somebody was like, hey, are you running? I was like, yeah, I'm running. So, I mean, I was asked.
That's how it usually is done, after...
So it's done by the backdoor method?
No, no, in years prior, prior years, we would invite the candidates.
Yeah, it was beyond the agenda.
After the period for nomination papers, you know, ended, the invitation would go out to the candidate saying, you're invited to attend the next board's meeting, introduce yourself, and you'll have this many minutes. So it was a formal ask.
So is the formal ask gone the wayside in recent years?
Yes, because a prior year's board, Pat was chair, said, we're not, you know, we're suspending doing that.
All right.
And now you're asking, should we bring it back?
Right. So...
That's how it went, it wasn't random.
How long ago was that suspended?
The first time I was chair.
First time Pat was chair.
So was it customary for many, many years?
Yes, I think that was acknowledged, yes, it was done for decades.
Well, then, I don't know why we haven't, Paul, looked at it, because if it was customary for many years, it must have been permissible and we should vote on it one way or the other.
I wouldn't necessarily guarantee that either.
Well, we hear a lot of customary and traditional and so forth, but if it wasn't a problem then...
It may be that nobody raised it as a problem, but again, I really would be shocked if it were.
Then we would cease and desist it if we voted to do it.
Yes, I would hope.
So, anyone have a motion to reach out to the candidates once the ballot, once their candidacy is certified, their list is certified, to invite them in?
So you're talking all elected candidates?
All candidates for elected offices.
For townwide office.
Townwide office, elected.
Do you remember that changed, when was Pat chair, that that changed, how long ago?
It was probably six or seven years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's only been a prohibition for six years?
Well, and depending who was chair, some did. I think, I don't remember, George, did you invite candidates?
No, we didn't change it, but, I mean, I believe it's a good thing because we don't get a lot of people to watch, but people who do watch have an interest in the government. I mean... I mean, the only people who watch are the people who care about what goes on at the selectmen's meeting. So I think they'd like to see who's running for selectmen.
Well, if they care, I'm sure they have plenty of other ways that they find out about it.
Well, I don't know.
You know, strangely enough, so I had one person, I had to miss one debate, and I got a phone call, you missed my debate. That's the only one I watch. I was like, yeah, I had laryngitis. I literally could not speak, like, no words were coming out. Well, I guess I don't know anything about you. I was like, well, there was the one where it was just me on the stage for 45 minutes. So, you know, you could go watch the video. Oh, no, I don't watch a video. I was like, okay. Well, you know, so you do have people that have their very, their preferred method of getting information. So, I mean...
Well, we haven't heard, and have you gotten any questions about why people haven't done it the past few years? Probably not. So obviously, nobody missed it.
I did.
One person. All right.
Have there been contested elections?
Almost.
There have been a lot of, a lot of three people running for five seats.
Oh, selectmen, there's been.
Selectmen, there have been a few. But, I mean, there are a lot of them where you get, you know, two seats open and two people show up. Or for town meeting wraps, you get five seats open and three people pull papers, and then everyone scrambles last minute to do write-ins. So...
Everybody has the preferred way of getting information, whether it's a newspaper, whether it's Facebook, whether it's watching a YouTube video, or hopefully watching the Board of Selectmen meetings. But, you know, there's no reason why we shouldn't, I just feel there's no reason why we shouldn't allow them to come in for a couple of minutes, introduce themselves, and thank us for their time, and off they go, and then they will find their way. So anyone feel that they want to make a motion to do that?
Sure. I'll make a motion to let candidates come and introduce themselves.
For townwide elections?
For townwide elections in a brief, concise manner.
I'll second that, as long as it's all done the same time. You know what I mean? We'll all do it in one shot. You know what I mean? So all the candidates will come in, so it'll be a gender item.
On the same night.
And give a one-minute, just who they are, where they live, how long they lived in town, nothing political.
So the...
So you're going to restrict the content of their speech?
You can't do that.
Well, you're not...
They just have two minutes to say whatever they want.
How about one minute? One minute's actually long enough.
It is. It's very long.
You were pretty long there, Ken. So...
I learned that, how to shut my mouth, though.
So when are the certification process, when does that finish?
It would be, yeah, it would be in time for your second meeting in February, which would be the 25th.
And so is there time to send those letters out at that point?
Well, you wouldn't, you don't know yet.
You don't know who they are, but we'll send them out just almost two weeks prior to that, yeah. Everything closes around the 12th.
The 12th, yeah.
All right.
Sure.
So we'll do it on the 12th.
So if you're thinking about running, and you check, and you see, gosh, there are spots, or that's uncontested, and I'd like to run, you have until the 8th to pull papers, and the 12th to get all your signatures back. And it's not a lot of signatures. You can do it.
I want to go back in timeline.
Is there a vote?
All right, so we have a person. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
I'm against.
Four to one, one against.
See, I can't change my mind.
Well, unless you'll be running again, you can come in and speak at the platform again. All right. The next one is a discussion of a warrant article to allow towns' elected officials over the age of 60 to receive credit for property tax reduction under the Senior Citizen Property Tax Work Off program. All you...
I'm just going to start off up here.
Stay there. Don't sit down.
So at the town manager's request, I did look into this issue. General laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, does provide provision for people over 60 where they can do volunteer service to a town and actually get up to $1,500 off of their property tax bill. I was not able to find anywhere that would actually define what volunteer service would consist of. I did do some research. I had, very initially, had concerns with regards to State Ethics Commission and whether or not that this, you know, could constitute an ethical violation, particularly for members of, say, the Board of Selectmen, who may have some sort of supervisory role over the program. So I found 930 CMR 6.17 states a participant in a senior tax program may hold additional municipal positions and have financial interests in municipal contracts without violating MGL, Chapter 268, Section 20, which is the conflict of interest law, provided that the employer does not participate in or have official responsibility for the administration of such program or decision-making with respect to the award of benefits of relief under such program. So that gave me more concern. I did actually contact the State Ethics Commission on Friday and asked an attorney there what their input was. They said, you know, that this is the only provision of that statute that they have oversight, and that they really looked at this as an issue of whether or not you were sort of making decisions as to who would be able to receive the benefit and who wouldn't. So they didn't necessarily have the same concern that I did with regards to this, but they also told me that their interpretation of the statute would be that that volunteer service has to be something over and above what was already previously being granted. So a board member, they don't believe it's within the ambit of the statute for a board member to use their service on the board as the volunteer service. The statute is really looking for an additional benefit that this person would be providing to the municipality that the municipality is not otherwise receiving. And then, you know, the way the program works is you actually have to have oversight as to the number of hours that are being billed, and there's an hourly rate that's associated with it. And they didn't think that that was an appropriate way for addressing that volunteer service under the statute.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So I would say that kills it. Would everyone agree to that?
Yep.
And I'm fine with that.
We will not discuss it.
Is there anything else you need to be for?
No, I think that's it.
Good night. Thank you.
We'll give you a call if you're in your car. All right. The Board of Selectmen Member for Planning Board's Master Plan Update Committee, they are putting together, they have the responsibility to put together a committee to study the master plan. It was about 10 years ago, Paul?
Yep.
Just like the town charter was about 10 years ago. And I spoke to the planning board at their meeting last week, and suggested that there's no rush to do, there's no set timeframe to do this, other than it's due around now. And that since the Board of Selectmen's going to change, the planning board is going to change potentially with the elections, that it would make more sense to just hold off appointing a person until after the election. In our case, you could have someone, let's say, appointed, and all of a sudden, based on the election, that they're now the chairman of the board. So in addition to all their duties as chairman, they probably wouldn't want to be doing this other work as well, being on another committee. And the same is true of the planning board. Also, they're going to take a year, they could take 18 months, whatever it is. It's a 150-page document, so it's going to take some time to get through that document. And that it should be reflective of the people who are on the board for the bulk of that period of time to be cognizant and having appointed someone who they want to be their liaison, or whatever the case may be, on the committee. So their chairman thought it was, had a lot of merit. They did appoint one person who was previously on the board, because they wanted someone who was on it previously, and they did find someone, they said, oh, yeah, that person will be good. They're on it. They did find Judge Zaharulis, who was on the previous board member, who expressed a desire to be on it. So they said, sure, you'll come on it. So they have at least two people on it. So, you know, it's up to the board to decide whether or not you want to appoint someone now, or really to wait. They have no problem in waiting, because according to them, that committee will never get going until after the election anyway, with all they have on their table at this point. So...
I guess one thing about that, Paul, you got notification from NEMCOG today about the D L T A, correct? And they are going to, NEMCOG is going to provide some resources for that. That still will give enough time before the deadline for that.
I think so.
What kind of resources would that be, Pat?
Basically, staff resources to help, you know, go through and...
I understand there's a lot of, some analytical data that changes, will definitely change.
Don't worry, have them do some prep work in advance of the meetings. That way, when the committee is formed, they can hit the ground running.
Yeah, and maybe suggestions for zoning changes, too. I mean, I'm sure there's lots of that going on right now. So, yeah, it might, yeah, it might even be preferable to push it along a couple of months from now. So, yeah, I'm okay with that.
George, what do you think?
Doesn't matter to me. I'm ready to vote if you want, and if you want to wait, we'll wait. I have no...
You know, I don't see the, you know, the rush in it. You know, it's more important, if nothing's going to go on for a couple of months and the election is imminent, might as well pick someone who's contemporary to that period, in which case, you're not talking about a lot of time, you're not going to lose any time, and that the new board will have its layout of who's who, and people will say, yeah, I got the free time to do it, or I don't have the free time to do it. So what's your feeling, Ken?
Well, I can wait. I mean, I'll throw out the, that I really don't want to be chairman next year, but I would like to do that. So keep that in mind if we're going to push it out, that I would be interested in the master plan.
Get out.
All right, so we got a dogfight here.
No.
And there will be, there will be at least one new member who may solve this dogfight.
I don't mind waiting. That's fine. I just, you know, put my...
Maybe do a lot of prep work to study the master plan now, and then when the time comes, you'll have a pretty good idea what it says. And then when people start discussing it, you'll be more informed. I don't know. Maybe it's a good idea to do it now, for that reason.
As I said, it's, you know, the planning board is the one that gets this going, and they just don't feel that they're going to really have time to address it till after the election. They have just too much on their plate. So are we in agreement that we will just hold off on that?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
I'm great.
Sure.
Okay. If you would just let Mike Rigney know, just...
Mike Rigney?
Excuse me.
Mike Rigney.
I'm trying to...
Mike Rigney has done one gigantic committee.
He pulled papers, yeah?
Mike Rigney's done a job.
Okay, yeah, no, he's, oh, man.
Burnt out?
I didn't mean it that way.
All right.
I think, I think asking him to do another gigantic committee would be a step too far.
Town manager reports, is that what's up?
Yes.
Sure, I'll try to reprieve. I know the hour is getting late. Again, I have an updated draft spring annual town meeting warrant. Remind the board that in two meetings from now, on the 25th of February, you will sign the warrant for the spring annual town meeting. So I'll bring you an update again tonight, and I'll bring you a final update, your next meeting on the 11th. And then we'll get the final language, and then council review, so, you know, so that it's in your packet that week before the 25th, I believe, on the 20th or so, recognizing the holiday there as well. So really, not much change since the earlier draft of the warrant. Again, the front articles are typical for budgetary spring annual town meeting. Again, most notably, you know, when the Shobat Tech is submitting an article for MSBA roof, window, and door replacement project, next Thursday, this coming Thursday, the 31st is the breakfast. I think we'll hear more details at that. And at your next meeting, I believe the school committee will be here, and Dr. Lang, because it looks like they will be considering a small MSBA project for a portion of the roof at South Row School. So again, that's why I said this warrant is fluid, but...
Is that separate from, I assume they're going to be...
It'll be separate, yeah, that'll be separate.
Asking for the high school again?
Right, right. But this is a, there appears to be a section of the South Row School roof that is in need of repair. I think you're probably talking like a $200,000 project at most, at which 50% would be reimbursable. So in meeting with Dr. Lang last, end of last week, last Friday, he informed me that he anticipates he'll be here at your meeting, next meeting, in two weeks, on the 11th, and that it'll be on the next school committee agenda. So you'll be hearing about it.
Do you feel that that's because of what the Shobat won, that their eyes get opened, that there's a second approach?
I think Lowell opened everybody's eyes when everyone started saying about that the money was being left there on the table. And I think what's also happening in Chelmsford is it clearly appears that any major project is years off in the doing, and you don't want to do what Lowell did, was they had all, they sort of were so fixated on the high school project and Lowell, that these other projects fell behind. And then in speaking to Gary Persicetti today, it will not be for this town meeting, it may not be for this year, but he reminds me that the high school boilers were installed in the year 2000. And when you start thinking we're hitting, approaching 2020, we may be looking at a boiler project perhaps in a couple of years at the high school, and the benefit there would be twofold. One is you'd get the 50% reimbursement for perhaps replacing 20-plus-year-old boilers, but also you'd probably get more energy-efficient boilers. So...
What is the cost?
He's trying to develop that estimate now, because it's been almost 20 years since they were installed.
Yeah.
So, but you're, yeah, you're probably talking, you know, if it's five boilers and they're, you know, it could be in the few hundred thousand dollar range. So anyway...
And I assume, since you're looking at a full high school project, that the high school would be reused, or it wouldn't be spent?
Yeah, we would not do a project that we're then going to throw away. You don't want to be, you know, throwing money in and then ripping it out or tearing it up. So again, that's a notable article. The, another one that was mentioned earlier, Article 18 on the list right now, I am submitting an article to increase the funding for the Senior Citizen Property Tax Work Off Program. Right now, that's the last town meeting vote, increase it to a, to $100,000 of funding. That vote occurred now several years back, and that was in 2015. So I'm going to request that the amount be increased to $150,000. So increase it to 150. So what that would do is that would provide additional relief. Right now, we roughly have about 150 participants in the program. You know, 150 divided by, you know, 150,000 would be roughly a $1,000 benefit. Right now, the benefit is closer to $700 or so. So again, I think it's an effort in spirit of what the board and the community has about providing some assistance for those in need.
I'll be, I'll be signing up for that. And those hours are a chip shot compared to working for the Board of Selectmen.
And then, and one was also mentioned earlier, discussion, Article 22, community preservation is still refining their proposals, and one appears to be perhaps a facade and signage improvement program. As I mentioned also earlier tonight, we're also looking at the tennis courts and maybe converting the two tennis courts, because they're in tough shape. We've heard those concerns over the years. And rather than replacing the two tennis courts, I've asked for the cost for one tennis court and one pickleball court.
You enlighten people with what a pickleball...
Wish as you could.
Yeah, I wish I could. It's become a very popular outdoor sport.
Not just outdoor.
In indoor, and indoor, particularly if you have it in this room.
Olympic level yet?
They have associations. You can find them like on ESPN and different things. It's essentially played on a small tennis court, but they're using what appears to be ping-pong paddles with a wiffle ball on a tennis court. It may be a little smaller in dimension than a full-size tennis court, but...
So it's like tennis?
Yeah, but it's, but it's...
Different paddles and a different ball?
It's different, but it allows, it's very...
Slow, it's just slower?
Right, so you see, it's very popular in Florida and other communities where elder populations are taking advantage of it.
Demographics are different.
Yeah, exactly. A little bit older demographics, but you're watching communities like Lowell basically installing facilities.
Do we have any curling?
I don't have curling.
But we do have a lot of people that play midweek here. There's quite a few people that play pickleball in the gym here during the week. It's very popular.
Not this week, though.
Not this week. The renovations are done. Right. So anyway, we will, and then the planning board is still working on its zoning bylaws. So again, this will all come together. And again, I'll bring you another revision in two weeks, and then you'll have the final version for you on the 25th.
I just have one suggestion.
Yes.
And again, we have the right to change the order.
Right.
And I'm very concerned with Number 23.
Okay.
The reason is that I don't want it to get tied up in the mess, which is liable to be...
24, 25?
The rest of them.
What's, where would you...
Well, the problem is trying to figure out where to put it. I don't want it anywhere near that, because it's a separate issue that I don't think requires the same kind of debate. It has a lot of merit, and it's liable to go out with the bathwater potentially, because the Route 41, nobody even knows what they're coming forward with.
Okay.
So all the rest seem to kind of flow along in a concise order. But I think that should come early on in the meeting. So, all the rest seem to kind of flow along in a concise order, but I think that should come early on in the meeting in some way, if you can find a better spot for it. It should not be stuck there with the other two.
Well, you either have to stick it in front of all the housekeeping ones, or you don't really want to stick it in the middle of the housekeeping ones.
I mean, Tommy, you can always take it on board, but I could put it after, I could put it as 10. I mean, after you do the operating and capital budget, that could be the place to put it, if that's what the board would prefer.
Because it shouldn't be the same night.
Okay.
The others are going to be heavy hitters.
Okay. I will move, I will move 23 to 10, before 10, before the existing 10. Before we get into the enterprise and, okay, okay, thank you, that's helpful. That's helpful to do it in advance. Okay, so that's the update on the warrant, and again, I'll bring you.
Can I ask a question on the budget or?
Sure. That's what I'm going to do right now, I'm going to do the budget.
Okay, go ahead.
But if you want to, anyway, budget. I released last Thursday and presented to the Finance Committee the, my proposed, town manager's proposed fiscal year 2020 operating and capital budgets, and John Sousa was there, he presented the capital. You've seen the capital requests, and I have a PowerPoint that's in your slide, and it's here on the operating budgets. You know, I recognize we're approaching 10 o'clock, so I won't spend a lot of time, but let me explain sort of how things unfolded. Obviously, you know, we had a tri-board meeting in December, we discussed budgets, you know, the capital budget at that time was recommended, recommendations were in. We saw what was happening with the economy and the Fed and the stock market and so forth at the end of December. And as been custom, we wanted to see the governor's proposed budget before I finalized my proposed budget for the town. And the reason for that is, you not only get the governor's proposed proposals for education funding and unrestricted local aid, but you also get the first release of cherry sheets, which provide a number of information on state assessments to the town, particularly in charter schools, and, you know, and notably, the governor not only released the budget, but when he released the budget, he also released an education funding bill that would change the Chapter 70 formula that was the last, you know, last adopted wholesale in 1993. So, obviously, if you do the math, you know, it's 25 years ago. Wasn't, you know, not insignificant. And then in that, he also changed the reimbursement formula for charter school reimbursement. So, the cherry sheet that came out was very helpful to finalize the process, because you've got swings of, you know, six-figure swings moving, taking place. When we were at the annual meeting of the Mass Municipal Association, the governor appeared, and the lieutenant governor appeared, and much to my disappointment, and perhaps others, I won't speak for others, the governor level funded the Chapter 90 road monies, you know, once again, the 200 million statewide, which has been at that number since the previous governor. So, we didn't sort of see any, you know, which, which, the best survey and information we have now is it's only a third of the investment that's needed in the community municipalities' roads across the Commonwealth to maintain the infrastructure, but that didn't change. They also announced that they would increase the unrestricted general government funding, which used to be known as lottery monies, with the increased like great growth rate of the projected state budget, which was 2.7%. That one we've seen has been his policy, this would be the fifth year, so we saw that one coming. Then they also announced they were going to level fund charter, I'm sorry, circuit breaker, special education reimbursement, which are for those high-cost claims. Level funding means it's a program cut, because the program costs go up. And so, previously, it was funded at 75%, which is the statutory requirement. Right now, at level funding, it would actually get down to 70% because of the programmatic cost increases. So, that was disappointing when the lieutenant governor spoke at the Mass Municipal Association Conference. What wasn't mentioned at all, for the first time that I've ever been at one of these meetings, was there was no mention on Chapter 70 funding, and I think the reason was, was they were still formulating the bill. That thing came out last Wednesday, you know, five days ago, and they didn't, and they did not release the cherry sheets until both, which are the local aid assessments and, and his legislation. It was announced at 2:00 that afternoon. The actual details of the individual community's funding came out about 4:30. So, we were able to turn it around literally in just about 24 hours to the Finance Committee and put in your packets. And again, it was disappointing. Once again, under the governor's budget and under his proposed education funding reform for, for education funding across Commonwealth, Chelmsford would receive $20 per student over the previous year. And if you've got 5,000 students, you can figure out it's $100,000 roughly. And then basically, what was then announced in his proposal was that 80% of the additional revenues that the governor was proposing, and he talked about it being a billion-dollar investment over, you know, seven years and what have you. You know, what it came down to it is, 80% of the money in the first year was going to, you know, very, most of the urban gateway city schools, and that basically, most communities, including Chelmsford, were getting the minimum foundation, which is $20 per student. So, when I built the budget, I foresaw, or I foresee what's happened in prior years, and what I think will happen this year is there will, there were some, not a lot of people, there were some people who weren't thrilled with the proposal, and there is a legislative alternative out there. So, what I've done in my budget is I'm assuming that we will receive, as we have in past years, more than the governor proposes in Chapter 70 education funding. So, I basically bumped it up, you know, by 50%, which isn't a whole heck of a lot, but if you look at what we received in the last few budgets, it's been about 150,000. So, you know, so it's disappointing. If you, and you'll see in my presentation, it's, you know, it certainly doesn't keep pace with the cost of education nor inflation. So, anyway, to bring it all home and to be concise, I'll try to be concise, you got $137 million budget is what I'm proposing. It's about 3.3% beyond the current funding level. The Chelmsford Public Schools, as I indicated at the meeting in December amongst the Selectmen Finance Committee School Committee, I'm proposing a $61 million budget, which is an increase of $2 million, a 3.3%. You know, obviously, the budget grows at the same for the schools as your overall budget for the schools. On the general government side, there was also another announcement, and I know Pat was there on Saturday, and I learned about it formally on Thursday at the, at the annual meeting for our insurance company, Maya. Utilization was down across the plan, as well as across Blue Cross, and as well as in the region, and no one could really give a good explanation for it. So, what had happened was, healthcare costs are going up, but utilization has declined. And so, what ended up happening was, instead of foreseeing what would have been a 5% or 6% or 7% increase in healthcare premiums, it basically came in level. In fact, the average budgetary increase, premium increase was about 0.5%, but most communities, it's zero or slightly less. And the GIC, which is State's Group Insurance Commission, their program, their increase was, on average, 3.3%. Nobody's been able to give a good explanation why the declining utilization, other than it's happening. So, it was a bit of an anomaly. So, what I did is I then transferred that money from the health insurance benefit and of recommending it be funded into the OPEB liability fund. And therefore, that would basically would go towards the fact that we would, you know, reduce the burden that we're passing on to those coming after us by basically not addressing the unfunded liability, much similar to what we're mandated to do under the pension liability. So, when all that is said and done, the general government, meaning the non-school department budget, also goes up by 2.9% or, or 845,000, or to a 30.1 million dollar level. Neshoba Tech, I don't have their assessment, we're going to get it in three days. I'm estimating it's not going to be more than, than 82,000. It's, and it's roughly a 2.7% increase. And the reason for that was twofold. One is that the numbers came out with the, with the, again, the budget that came out with the governor's budget. The enrollment numbers came out. Neshoba's tech enrollment has gone down. However, our enrollment at Neshoba Tech went down greater than their decline enrollment. So, long story short, Neshoba Tech, we were roughly 30% this year of the students, next year we're 29%. That reduces our burden of the assessment, as well as the, a share of the debt service for existing debt out there and transportation costs. What it doesn't capture, and we have to see when the, on Thursday, is how the net school spending, Chapter 70 money, gets allocated between the town and Neshoba Tech, because that has to do with the decline in the Chelmsford Public Schools enrollment versus the decline in the Shoba Tech. So, we will see that. But again, I think there's a number there that's within striking distance, whichever way. And then the other good thing for us is that our debt service is declining. We have 100, over $100,000 decrease in debt service, so that declines by about 7/10 of a percent. So, I mentioned, again, what's in this budget. I do have, I am providing, as I indicated in December, I'm providing for a full-time school resource officer at each of the middle schools. So, there'll be a, right now, we have, we share a, one full-time police officer who splits the time between the Parker and the McCarthy Middle Schools. What I'm proposing is that they be, each school would have a school resource officer. So, there'd be one at Parker, a different one full-time at McCarthy, as well as the full-time, we have one at the high school. And that's, that's a, that's a, that's a police officer. So, we would add one officer to our complement of officers employed in the Chelmsford Police Department, and that person would be assigned during the school year at the middle schools. Now, the beauty of that is during the summertime, then give us another officer, which would address the vacation and overtime and other issues. So, that's sort of the approach there.
How many officers, new officers will that require? Just one?
Just one.
Just one?
Just one. No, it's a permanent person assigned. It's not the officer of the day, it's a person who is assigned to the schools. So, that's a, that's a new, new hire, a new, new position funded in the budget. I also have, and you'll see it in the highlights, I also, as I indicated in December, I'm requesting the funding for a community services off, coordinator, who would be that person, he or she would be that person, who would serve the needs of those who are falling through the cracks, you know, and discuss this at department head meeting. And I also, at the conference, spoke to the person who does this in another community, and talked to some of my colleagues. This is a growing real need, you know, that the issues of, as I said in December, and I said at the Finance Committee, you know, we have a, we have a resource officer for veterans, that's the Veterans Agent. Regina does a fantastic job. What we need is a resource officer for the remainder of the community. And as I said, it's not, it's not an elder resource officer, it's a community resource officer. So, the person would be located in this building, much like Regina is, and would serve those who don't know where to turn. Now, we're not going to be clinicians, it will likely be a social worker, but it's not going to be providing social services. It's going to be the person who's going to help those get the resources, much like Regina does, where they can go. If they have a, they have a person who's dealing with hoarding, they have a child that's dealing with depression or suicide, dealing with, you know, a parent with dementia. All these services are sort of being triangulated by the Board of Health, the Police Department, the Senior Center, Veterans Agent, and so forth. But there is no sort of, you know, director or coordinator who's sort of grabbing onto it and seeing where it goes. So, that's in the budget.
What type of salary?
Talking about $70,000 in salary.
No benefits?
Yeah, then benefits would be on top of that. So, when you then go through the, if we go to the next slide, you then go through the, keep going. You keep going to the line item change. Again, that's why you see the community services line increase by 10%, because 70 of that 120 is that position. If you, I also fully fund the reserve fund back to the original $400,000, which pleased the Finance Committee, because right now, you know, you remember that 245 was taken out of the budget at the Fall Town Meeting this year by the decision to staff the overtime and the fire department budget. Right now, we have, you know, there are known requests for that reserve fund, particularly in facilities, that are approaching six figures. So, there is a real need for a reserve fund in the budget, so I restore that to the 400 level. Those are sort of the major, major changes. And again, if you go to the next slide, which shows the major dollar increases by dollar amount, you can see, again, Chelmsford Schools, the pension assessment, the OPEB Liability Trust Fund, and then you've got your salaries, your DPW, police, fire, and then your workers' comp and property insurance. Obviously, what's going on there is, particularly in the property, you know, the insurance companies are increasing the valuation of property in light of what's a very, you know, a very distressed market. And it obviously affects municipalities as well. So, they're actually valuing the property at what it should be at, not some artificially low number. You know, if you think about what it would cost to replace in kind the high school or middle school or this building and so forth. And, and again, we have an increase in our solid waste collection contract, and again, you see the Neshoba Tech, and then obviously Medicare taxes tied to payroll. You know.
Paul, we spent as much as unsure.
Go ahead.
Mike, can you just slide back?
Go back up.
Workers' comp and insurance is.
Health insurance.
As much as our fire department?
That's the increase, that's the increase.
Oh, that's the increase.
Yeah, you'll see the lines.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So, again, when you look at the revenue component, you can see the property taxes bearing the burden, 3.88% of roughly $4 million. Again, that's allowed 2.5% plus the new growth. And then the state aid is less than $100,000 net on, so it's half a percent. And then the local receipts will be discussed in December. We've already peaked, we believe, on motor vehicle. We, we haven't received the commitment, but we have the preliminary commitment, as John has, and it does show fewer bills. We're just waiting for the details of it, which is the big part of local receipts, as we discussed, it's half, more than half. And then available funds are basically, that's, that's just funds really coming in from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund that's available to offset the associated benefit costs. So, again, if you go to the governor's thing, which you see, go to the next slide. You go to the governor's proposal, I put the numbers in, you know, that's what he, that's what he's proposing. The 100, we'd actually get $101,520 or $20 per student, so it's less than 1%. I don't know how they feel that that's adequately supporting communities. Less than 1%. You can see that the unrestricted is 2.7%, and you can see that the variance in the numbers is the education funding is twice as much as the unrestricted, so it's, it's disappointing that all of this funding isn't increasing with the growth in state budget. And again, I mentioned earlier, he underfunds the other. So, you, again, this is how it comes out in terms of how the budget is allocated by. And you can see we're spending almost $25 million in benefits and insurance, which is 18% of the budget. You can see 10% of our budget is debt service, 14 million, and then, as you can see, you know, the most expensive operation is public works, facilities and cemeteries, then police, fire, and so forth, library. And then again, you look over five years, I tend to look at five a year and 10-year comparisons. You can see, and the bold numbers and the changes, obviously, the magnitude of the dollars go towards, you know, which is our most expensive department, schools, $10 million increase in five years, benefits and insurance, $6 million increase, or 32% in five years, and then public safety, you know, you know, 20% increase, which is, you can see is roughly in line, but dollar-wise, it's significant of 2.25 million dollars. Yes.
Paul, one of the, one of the things at the conference the other weekend that they were talking about is that the biggest expenditure in any school budget is always.
Personnel.
Health insurance.
Yeah.
And it's specifically health insurance. You know, after salaries, it is benefits and insurance, because we are not doing that right. And I'm wondering if that is included within that 61 million, or if that is separated out into the 25 million.
That's part of the 25 million, but what happens is at the end of the fiscal year, the town accounting and the school business manager report what they call net school spending.
Yeah.
So, it's the 61 million plus the other benefits.
Got it.
That go to the schools, and that puts, and you'll see those numbers later, how it puts us well over the minimum requirement.
No, so my other question is, did the shutdown affect any of these five and 10-year projections? And if he pulls another one, is it going to affect?
No.
Because that was, that was like 11 or 13 billion, or whatever the latest projections are.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not seeing that at this point in time. God knows what will happen in three weeks, but we'll see where we are. Obviously, the question is if it affects the economy, then that affects everybody. So, that's why, again, we were, we, we're, we're feeling that we passed our local receipts. The other thing we did do, though, and this was discussed at Finance Committee and at Department Head Meeting, we have asked our boards and officials to go back and look at their fee schedules. We think we're, and so, for example, when the Board, when the Board Health Committee asked for the additional inspector, we said, hey, make sure your fees are contemporary with our peers, and that those have been increased. We also found the same thing with our building department. You had to go back four inspectors to find out when the last time the town examined and adjusted its building permit fees. And I think the same thing might be for this board. I've asked Christina to look at the town, the Board of Selectmen's licenses. I've been here 12 years, I know the board has never adjusted its local license fees or hominid v. fees and so forth. So, I think it's something to at least look at, how are we comparing to our peer communities over time. So, we'll, we'll see where we are. It's not going to materially, but the problem is, is if you don't do it, then you get into that shock effect when you do do it, because you've fallen so far behind to get contemporary. So, we will look at that as well.
Don't you have another employee for OSHA?
Yeah, right, and you'll see that in the, and that, you'll see that in the slide where we show the number of full-time employees. So, you then go to the 10-year impact. Again, you sort of look at, well, gee, obviously, Neshoba Tech, by percentage-wise, went up significantly over 10 years, but you don't see it over the five years, and that was. that was because of the construction project, where it seems now their enrollment has stabilized. But obviously, the schools have gotten $18 million over the last 10 years in aggregate amount, but yet aren't disproportionately funded, you know, compared to other departments. So, and again, you can sort of see, you know, what's happening is, you know, you also see that bottom line, state assessments and overlay, again, those state assessments are what's, are also a sort of a cost to the community. So if you now go into the school line, again, the 61 million for the schools, you look, I then give you a 10-year history of school funding, you can see that that $2 million number is not out of line with recent increases, and/or percentage-wise, and in talking to the superintendent last Friday, he's confident that they can live within that number, although they're having their hearing process and, at this point in time. When you look at the next slide, which shows the decline in state education funding, you can, you can, again, we don't have the 2020, because, but you know the governor's proposal's only 100,000. So you can see why he settled at 150, because the last couple of years were 152 and 147, and then he skipped the odd year, that you can now see him around the 128, 126 number. So, again, but the, the sad part is the right column, which shows percentage increase, again, that the, you can just see how it's just, it, it's not even keeping pace with inflation, nor special ed cost increases, or so forth. So again, what you're seeing is a increasing burden on the local community. You then look at how we fare, and we talked about this back in December, about how we fare compared to our, our neighboring towns, and again, the big one, if you go all the way to the bottom, Westford is sort of the outlier there, that even though they have a similar enrollment as Chelmsford, and have higher per capita income and higher equalized valuation, you know, they're receiving $17 million this current year, and Chapter 70 we're receiving 11, because the formula was dependent upon growth, and be interesting to see what happens in the...
They had a temporary jump, and they never, they never took, they made a permanent thing.
Exactly.
How about, what's Borica? Is that eight, they eight million ahead of us?
Who's that?
Yeah.
Borica, yeah. But Borica has lower wealth. I mean, you look at the per capita income between Chelmsford and Borica, even equalized value per capita. So you can, you can, you can sort of get insight as to why Borica would receive more than Chelmsford.
But when was that last done, though, Paul?
Oh, the equalized valuation, done every two years. That's, that's the number as of 18, and the income per capita was 15. So, you know, and again, that, where the governor is going with his thing is, it's going after you, how many students are receiving free lunch, how many English language learners, and so forth. So, you know, there's obviously some merit as to, you know, there's some very intelligent people in the administration where they're going. The problem is, is what do they do for what we call the middle-class communities, such as Chelmsford? If you then go into public school funding, Emily's question earlier, well, how are we doing in terms of our obligation? You can see we're in, in 19, let's go back this quickly. You can see back in 19, we, we were, just, yeah, stick on the arrow there, right there. We, even though the budget was 59 million, we actually, there was another $10 million or $11 million in, in budget net school spending, that brings you to 70 million. So when you now go down to 20, you can see that the number, the required net school spending goes up by $2 million under the governor's formula, but, which is an increase of, of 4.54%. But again, we're, we're already 36% over requirement, that's not going to put us in any kind of a risk situation. In fact, most communities across the state are at, at least 25% above, you know, which is why you get only the foundation level. So, so again, that, that's what's proposed under his formula. When you look at the enrollment, per, I'm sorry, per pupil expenditure, again, they don't, the, the state's website doesn't have data out even for 18, which is the year they would have reported closing last June 30th, but you clearly must see, we must be $15,000 per pupil at Chelmsford Schools. And when you, when you keep going, obviously, that's, we can go to the next slide, so you're talking 15,000, again, and then, and then again, you look at the comparisons, and I think the best one, go to the chart. The interesting thing is, you look at the chart, because I know some people look at things graphically, Chelmsford's in the middle, you can see they're right, we're both located in the middle of, of, which, the blue is enrollment, and the red is per pupil expenditure. And interestingly, a couple of our peer communities to the right, which are the highest ones, are Borica and Tewksbury, and this group of communities is chosen by the state, not me. And yet, we're very similar to Westford for our per pupil expenditure. If you then go to the next set of slides, which is what we spent on special education, if you stop on this slide, you can see Chelmsford's sort of a bit disproportionate. Our, we have clearly a large population of special education circuit breaker, which means these are generally students who are outside of the district, receiving services. You can see the percentage eligible is, other than Walpole, which, you know, percentage-wise means it's, it's, it doesn't compare, I mean, we're three times the number of students than Borica. You know, Tewksbury's at 56, we're at 92, Westford's at 35. So our claim is $4.3 million for a circuit breaker reimbursement. I mean, you can see it almost doubles that of our, of our, most of our peer communities. So yeah, your reimbursement comes in at 75 or 70%. But it just, it, it's just interesting, and, and I, I'm not making a statement about it, other than I stumbled across this data as I was mining, and it's like, so if you look at it graphically in the next slide, you can see that Chelmsford, again, now this time falls to the right, you know, of the end, which is the more expensive, you know, circuit breakers percentage of students. So many times we've heard over the years, families come to Chelmsford for special ed services, well, there may be something to that, even though it seems a bit peculiar, because you're going out of districts, generally, in most cases. So you would wonder if those people would receive those services, you know, again, we're not talking the marginal case, we're talking people who need costs that are four times the average, so you're talking like $80,000 a year for services, you're talking transportation...
Maybe you just had a much better program, and we were able to...
Yeah. So it's, I mean, from a humanitarian thing, it's sort of, it's fulfilling, but obviously it impacts the budget. You now look at enrollment in, in teachers and so forth, and again, the, the most recent data we have shows that obviously our enrollment's declining, the number of teachers is slightly increasing, and therefore, the student-teacher ratio for those licensed teachers is, is declining. Again, we don't have 19 data, that will, you know, will be coming later. And so you, you then look at our peer communities, and if you look at it graphically, the next slide, you sort of see that, again, Chelmsford is sort of, the, the smaller student-teacher ratio, we're third. Borica, believe it or not, has a, has a lower amount of student-teacher ratio than Chelmsford. But yet, you see communities like Westford, and, you know, is, is, you know, significantly larger, and, you know, basis-wise. Why that matters is, you start factoring in the cost of teachers and so forth, you know, it, it gives you that budget maneuverability.
So given our special ed costs, I would have assumed that we had more specialists. Is that because we are, is it transport...
But if they're being sent, if they're being sent out of district, it wouldn't be...
So they're being sent out of districts, or transport, so it's transport costs.
Yeah, right. As much as you, as much as they try to do some inclusion programs, there are some services that just have to be done out of district.
Yeah, obviously, yeah, no, I mean...
So again, we don't have recent data from even 18 on average class size, but if you take the most recent one of 17 class size and graph that out, you, you see that Chelmsford, again, is, is, is the lowest, in this case, in terms of average class size amongst these peer communities identified by the state. So it gives me the feeling, when I'm budgeting, that if things got tight, there is going to be some flexibility in the schools, because, you know, you, you, you could squeeze things a little tighter. And I think what you're going to see in talking to the superintendent last Friday is, they're probably going to have to shift educators from the high school to the elementary schools, because that's sort of where the enrollment is flowing at this point. So, so your, your class sizes are smaller, and generally, you tend to have smaller class sizes at the high school, because, you know, there are electives and everything, whereas elementary school. So anyway, going into Neshoba Tech, again, I'm, I'm budgeting 82,000 or 2.7%. Our enrollment at Neshoba Tech, as you can see, has finally stabilized. If you, we're now, the, the most recent number is 186. You can see, again, we declined by 12 students from the last year, and again, you know, so again, you can see that, that things really took off at the beginning of the decade, you know, 133, 144, 54, 73, 85, and now it's kind of plateaued between 185, 190, and then, you know, we obviously dropped a few from last year. So that's bringing down our assessment. Again, per pupil, again, the most recent data on the state website is 17. There's no question that right now, it costs over $20,000 per student. Interesting thing there is a jump. Went over $1,000 from 16 to 17, and per pupil, I mean, you just look at those trends, how they're increasing at $1,000 per year. That's why I sit here and confidently say, it's got to be over 20,000, if we're in 19 right now. So, and, and it's not to say that the high, the, what that is, obviously, the vocational schools is nine through 12. What happens in Chelmsford, why we're only 15, is, is you're, you're brought down by the elementary level, which is less expensive. Again, now moving into public safety, again, as I mentioned earlier, I, I've increased it to 70 full-time employees, or one additional sworn officer, again, for that school resource officer. When you start looking at call volume, we just got this from the end, on the next slide, from the end of the calendar year, you can see the call volume was up significantly from 32,000 calls to 35,000 calls. That's significant. It's not unprecedented, you can see 35 back five or six years ago. If you then go to the next slide, and to the fire department, that level is the same. You go to the next slide, you see the fire calls were up as well, significantly, to levels that were not seen before. 7,200 calls reported by the fire chief during the past calendar year. A lot of the calls, in talking to them, are medical. The increase we're seeing is a lot of medical-based calls. What, what you're not seeing in the police side is, you're not seeing, in fact, you're seeing decreased numbers in terms of violent crime, theft, and property damage, and so forth.
We had an unprecedented number of vehicle fatalities that they both responded to.
Yeah, that was, that was an anomaly this past year, the nine fatalities, which had never occurred. Going into 20, the fixed factors, again, we, we fund the employee pay, you, you then go to the middlesex retirement, and you can see there's the increase as mandated, so it's 543,000, or 6.5%. And the next slide shows you where the bulk of it is, and if you, you can see, the big thing is, it's that, it's that fifth column, payment on unfunded liability. For 19, it's six, it's right this year, it's 6.9 million, it goes up to 7.56 million. There's your increase. And then you can see the following year, since it's done in two-year releases, it'll be up another half, you know, $600,000 next year. The first one is your normal cost, left column, that isn't the problem. The big column is the unfunded liability. That won't get reset for another year, and so the question is, what happens in the stock market and their investments in calendar year 2019? Because we know in 18, they got nothing, because of what happened in the market. So it'd be interesting to see where that plays out. So again, the unfunded pension liabilities, as I mentioned earlier, I, I have the unfunded pension liability at 7.56 assessment, and then I, and then I put 1.5 million towards the unfunded OPEB liability. Moving on quickly to debt, you can see our debt is low, we saw this back last June, we issued debt, it's only 1.3% of our value, and 87% of it is scheduled to be repaid within 10 years. And again, that's all driven by the fact that we don't have a main school project on our books. So that's why the debt, if you see the actual numbers in the next slide, you can see your non-excluded debt service is, is almost level funded, it decreases by $8,300, so it's, it's noise. But you see your excluded debt, which pays for, you know, most notably, the earlier phases of the sewer project, and school, building project at the high school and middle schools, that's declining by 80, almost 2% or $84,000. So back to the FTEs, if you go to the bottom of there, you can see that I do note that what we now have is, we now have another full-time employee for OSHA, the health inspector that was promoted last fall, and then there's a school resource officer and the community services coordinator. So we roughly have about 250 employees, FTEs, on the town's general government side without counting the enterprise funds. So how you pay for it, again, as I mentioned, at 1.6 new growth, 2.4 the allowed 2.5% increase in the levy, the debt exclusion I mentioned just a moment ago declined, so that's off, is a reduction. The state aid at less than $100,000, zero local receipts, and then the available funds come in from the enterprise funds. You look over the five years real quickly, you can see the property tax would now be about, over 77% of the budget. You can see state aid falls from 14% of the budget to less than 13% of the budget. The sad one is, is Chapter 70 funding, the change in five years is 8.25%. So if you compound five years into 8.25%, you saw the numbers early, it's around 1% or so per year. And then you look at the general government aid, you can see that's where this governor has put his funding in, it's almost 20%, because he's been growing at the rate of the state budget. When you do that over a 10-year period, you can see that it's more balanced, because what happens is, the previous governor funded more in Chapter 70, so the 10-year period, you have an increase of $2 million, or 21%. So you can see, it's not, it's not the 1% compounded, you probably have 1.5% compounded. And then you can see the general government aid is, is roughly the same as the Chapter 70 aid, because you've had the reverse by, by the two governors. We're bringing this to a close real quick. Again, property tax revenue, again, the $4 million, as I noted earlier, you look at how the average single value goes, if you're paying $7,000 for, for your average bill, again, 45% of it, or 3150, goes to the schools, 18% or 1260 goes to benefits and insurance and, and so forth. We, we all know about the issue of valuation, we won't spend any time on that. What I will show you is the average single-family property tax bill. You can see as a result of the split in the rate, the town's ranking has fallen from 65th in the state down to 73rd in the state, because the average bill went from 71, 75, down, decreased by $172, or $7,003. So you can see over the five-year increase, the increase is, is $884. You then go to the next slide and see, well, how do we compare with our neighboring communities? And obviously, by implementing the split, the percentage increase over a five-year basis, you know, we, we, we come up the lowest because of the fact that, you know, the other communities haven't, you know, we're already at a split rate, aside from, from Westford, which has grown its, its levy with, with overrides. You then go into state aid, again, you can see it's less than a half, just over a percent, less than $100,000. You can see on that line, see where it says, "School Choice Tuition," it shows you that the schools have had a significant decline in their school choice enrollment, so their reimbursement would fall from 337 to 287. That's money that goes directly to the schools. You then move on to local receipts, again, with, there's no increase, and that's what I mentioned earlier, of the 10.45, 5.4 of it is motor vehicle excise. And you can see that 5.4 is, would be, it looks like we peaked in 18, you know, so that's where that's at. If you then go to the next slide, in terms of motor vehicle, as I said, we're still waiting for that commitment, and so you can see, again, we think the peak was in 18, well, I'll get you the numbers in 19 when they come out, it should be a matter of days. Available funds, I mentioned this earlier, you can see the, the big changes in the sewer enterprise offset. So basically, with now establishing the sewer enterprise, we then take the money from that fund and pay the benefits out of the benefits budget. So there really is no material change if you adjust for that, because it really isn't a material change, it's just employees that you're now paying the benefits for. Inflation, as I said earlier, it's now become a concern in recent years. Goodness knows where it's going to be, but you can see the latter years have been the most expensive, 3.2% through November, which is the most recent data from the, from the government, and 2.5 the last year. And then, again, I won't go through the capital plan, so the, that's pretty much the budget in itself. Again, the whole question is Chapter 70 formula, it, it, now's the time. We sat in this community for two decades, saying, we've got to change this, the education formula. It looks like it's going to happen this spring, so if there's going to be any effort to adjust that, now's the time to reach out to the legislative delegation, although, again, not terribly hopeful. I think the hopeful part is, more money would go in. The problem with the governor's proposal is, he, he has no dedicated revenue source, so therefore, he's relying on other aspects of the state government. And then again, we talk about the OPEB, that there, hopefully, there'd be some OPEB reform to corral this issue. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your patience through that. I don't know if you have any questions, or we can just move on to appointments.
Hi.
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
So where is this, like, I think you said this before, in like, three years?
Yeah.
How much trouble are we in?
How much trouble are we in in three years? But we did the five-year forecast, which shows we weren't in a lot of trouble. What I, I think what's going to happen, and it sort of goes to the efforts by the committee, a lot of it's going to happen, and what happens on 129. You heard a lot of encouraging things from Lisa, and there's also an article on this warrant that would allow the amendment to the zoning for not fast food drive-through, but modified drive-throughs. We are seeing significant interest in...
Best casual.
What's called casual food, you know, the best thing I can describe is, we have a Panera in town, in Drum Hill. If Panera were coming into town today, they'd want a drive-through.
Right, or like a Chipotle.
Or Chipotle, that type of thing. Or, you know, that's the difference. And so what's looking for to allow in 129 is not the next, you know, fast food, but the next, you know, casual.
Casual.
Exactly. I think that's going to be the dam that breaks because what you're going to see happening is, you're then going to see the amenities come in that's going to then support the opposite. I know we've talked about this for two years.
Right.
But I think Lisa's seeing it, we're seeing it, and the interest. And I think, so I think that's what's going to pull us out.
And they did tell us it was going to take, you know, like, seven years.
Yeah, I think that's what's going to, that's what's going to keep Chelmsford's head above water, believe it or not, is the commercial development. I think the other thing, and again, I'm not lobbying, that's why we look towards the Route 40 zoning, because there's that similar opportunity between that stretch from Route 3 to the...
Westford Line.
To the Westford Line would provide a similar situation for commercial and, you know, whether it's senior housing, assisted living, and/or type, you know, that type of development would support that type of commercial base in the community, which is why we, you know, I think that's, those two things are critical to the future. If those things aren't there, you're right, every community, including Chelmsford, is in trouble. What's helpful now is, you know, we're not going to, remember, our new growth for this year is going to end in five months.
Mm-hmm.
So we won't see the Turnpike Road in these numbers.
Right.
We won't see the...
Grissmill.
Grissmill in these numbers. But if things keep going and it breaks, you can see those numbers then providing that...
I mean, there's a lot of positive going on between that and...
Positive going on, but so that's when you say, where are we going? That's what gives me hope.
Now, this goes to town meeting for approval.
Yeah, right. Finance committee will hold a hearing, goes to town meeting for approval.
And they either get to approve the whole budget or not the whole budget.
No, they can amend it.
They can amend it.
They can amend it, yeah.
So I guess my question is, you know, we wanted to hire Lisa, we had to come forward to town meeting with her job description and a budget.
Yes, but, right, but remember, we hired her off-cycle. We hired, we funded her a half-year, much like the health inspector. We came in on the fall and added her a half.
When you fund half...
She started in January.
When you add half-year, that's a special, because, so for you to hire four more people in the budget, you don't have to do that off-cycle.
Right, it's built in, right. And so therefore, but it can be taken out. I mean, people could say, "No, I don't like the school resource officer, I'm going to recommend we reduce the public safety budget by, you know, $50,000." That can happen, just like at the fall.
When was the last time we hired four people, added four people in a given year?
I think if you go, I'll find if we, it goes back to...
Well, it was probably '09 or '12, because in '09, you dropped way down.
Yeah, we, yeah, the big thing was, was coming out of the recession, we went from 11 to 12, we added seven people. From 12 to 13, you restored 13 people, and...
But in '09...
Couple here and there, but yeah, but I mean...
Eight to nine, how many did you drop?
Eight to nine, we dropped from 240 to 218, so we dropped 22 people.
And so they kind of were recovering back.
Yeah, just recovering.
Right. You know, if you see that, if you see that there's a trend in all this, these positions, you know, school resource officer, community services officer, you know, it's going towards, you know, the social network of the community. And I can tell you, yes, you will not find a community services coordinator in Tewksbury or in Bubricka or in Drakeett. But if you go beyond that, you will find them in, you know, your NADICs, your Franklin's, your Actons, your, you know, your, you know, your communities who are seeing, and like I said, the need is here, we see it. This isn't, "Oh, wouldn't it be fun to have somebody?" You know, this is, this is, in fact, since we had the discussion of this in December, I've been approached by people who said, "Hey, you know, what can we do to help certain people?" And so I think, and the other one, basically mandated, we're required to have OSHA training officer, you know, because if not, there's a huge liability to the town. And I think the health inspector was sort of, almost a factor requirement as well.
Isn't the OSHA more important for us because many towns, like, if they need an electrician, they hire an electrician, or they hire, and we have our own people. So if you're hiring people, you're putting the liability on them, they have their own OSHA.
That's right.
Whereas we do many things on our own, and therefore, OSHA is...
Towns are now subject, as of February 1st, we're subject to OSHA.
So now we have to start complying.
So now we have to comply. You're right, if there's an incident, then, you know, if there's an accident, much like in the private sector, OSHA's going to investigate a serious accident. And then, and then they're going to come in, they're going to say, "Well, what were your regulations? What was your training?" And then you're going to then be subject to fines, as well as the fact you've got the liability from the person who's been injured.
Well, the problem on hiring people, the difference between Lisa and these other positions, basically, is Lisa was hired that, in theory, that's an expense that will make money in the long run.
Right.
Now you have positions where there's no return on, these are expense positions, no money return. Quality of life is improved.
Yeah.
But having town approve that needs some sell.
I agree. I think the OSHA one is a cost avoidance. If you don't have it, you're just opening up your insurance budget. Because you're going to pay liability claims, and it's going to affect your experience mod, which is going to affect your premiums, which is just going to, so it will pay for itself. The health inspectors, we said, we think they're covering their costs by their activity in being out there. The other ones are social services, and it's sort of the question of cost avoidance. In other words, you know, how do you estimate the cost for avoiding issues with youth at middle schools, or issues they get into? Or more importantly, community services, if you can allow that support network, again, you know, we sort of talked earlier, well, what's the cost of a house sells if an elderly person can only live there, but yet somebody moves in with, you know, a young family? So it's that social network. So you're right, Glenn, it is a net cost to the town, but it's sort of, as you said, it's a question of the fabric of the town, and the problem is...
I just think that the presentation at town meeting, thought has to be given to what we get in the end, which is not money.
Right.
But it's quality of life issues and avoidance issues and, because, you know, I think you're going to be looking, four positions seems to be a lot of positions right now.
So I think the social services coordinator is one of those things that has a lot of hidden benefits because you have a lot of people who are unaware of social programs, who are, and I suspect that in this town, it's going to be a lot of older people trying to figure out how to keep their heads above water with reduced incomes. But, you know, with the rise in healthcare costs, you've got, you've got a lot of people who need help, you know, and you've got, my conversations with Chief Spiny, he's mentioned a few times how so much of police work is shifting more towards mental healthcare in many ways, and social work in many ways. And so we now share, like, a licensed social worker with another few communities to help reduce that cost. We got it, I think they were great.
Yeah.
So, but having that coordinator to help people track down those services is going to save money in the long run. In terms of the school resource officer, I feel like in an affluent community, we have different problems at the middle school. I think that a part-time, I mean, I think in Fantasyland, yeah, that'd be great, but I think that, I think that the other positions are perhaps a step up on the priority list, you know, and...
We'll see.
Well, my comment to that little thing is, it was just a few months ago that we were sitting here having a screaming battle about expenses.
Yeah.
And the whole discussion about, "We need to rein it in, you got to cut costs." You were screaming about the ambulances not going through because of the money.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 we let $2 million walk out the door because people weren't looking at real numbers, so...
But remember, two of them are really added this year. Remember, when we had those discussions, we knew the OSHA was coming.
Yeah.
And the chicken, the chicken thing brought the inspector in, right.
Right, but the other, you know, I'm just looking at it, saying, "Okay, so we're going to add another $70,000 for community service," and how much for the officer?
Probably 50, yeah.
And then plus health, and...
Long-term benefits.
I don't see, I don't see how the officer is justifiable when you already have a part-time and it's an affluent community. I just...
Don't underestimate the issues that go on in the middle.
Oh, I know, I've taught middle school, I've taught middle school, I've taught high school, I know what goes on. Believe me.
I'm not going to be in the jerk here, but, you know, it's, I'm saying that we had this, all year long, we had these discussions about either, you know, increasing taxes or cutting costs.
Can I ask you, can you please contact your counterparts in NADIC or Framingham where they have a social services coordinator? And can you ask them for any scraps of, you know, ANIC data where costs might have been avoided? Can you, can you ask them, and if hard data would be better, but, you know, whatever they've got that can help justify that salary and can help give real examples where that can cut costs on a regular enough basis that you can say, "Look, this is going to pay for itself." So if you could do that, that would be helpful.
Okay.
So to finish what I was saying, you know, my comment on that was more of a, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't know if now's the time. So that's my only sort of comment on that. I understand where you're going with it.
I don't know what the time is.
And that may be, but, you know, we literally just, for the last nine months, all I've heard is, "Cost, cost, cost, we got to cut costs, cut costs."
We got to find new revenue.
Budget's tight, we got to find new revenue.
And it keeps getting rejected.
And now we got another 120-plus.
And we're still spending it faster than we're creating it.
Well, the budget's balanced.
It is, but, I mean, you know, when we're looking, when we're looking at longer-term numbers, I mean...
Yeah, but I have to.
Yeah, I know. So when you say it's balanced, of course it's balanced.
You know, I mean, like, so, and, so I just, I want to see some numbers, and I want to see, you know, because I, in theory, yes, absolutely, I just, I want to see data. And I also think that'll help the presentation go over better.
I think we're just saying that there may be pushback.
Sure, that's fine.
And having as strong an argument going in is beneficial to the end.
Yeah.
If you feel that the social services that these positions offer are very much needed.
I mean, OSHA liability, that's pretty clear, you can get multimillion-dollar lawsuits out of that, and that's going to, that's going to, plus, wouldn't your insurance policies go up if you don't have somebody?
But, you know, you go to the school committee meetings, and the topic of services for students is constant, that we don't do enough, not on the academic side, but on the...
We don't, we're underfunded.
No, we just saw a slide that says we're paying a ton for...
But, right, so, but the problem is, is that, so, we should be paying about 18K, and we're only paying like 15, like, we're still, we could, it's, it's that, I feel like with, with, with school budgets, it's always a question of rungs, and, you know, if you, if you get within a rung a little bit in either direction, isn't going to make much of a difference. It's when you get below or above that next level of the rung where it starts to have an impact. And I feel like, you know, if we could get above 18, Lexington spends 18, you know...
Well, Emily, I understand that, that's great, but, you know, our conversation's all through the year.
Oh, no, I know.
So the question is, we have to make the tough decision. Do we keep spending?
I'm going to say, I want, no, I want data, I want data, and so I need some numbers.
And the question is, if we say no, then what do we do with the excess?
You know, 100 years...
The excess money?
That's it, I've got it balanced, and the question is, if you, if you're right, if you push it back...
If you say no, what can you do with it? What would you, what would your next backup be?
I would do, I would do nothing.
So what would you do with it, though? You have to announce the budget.
The question is, we have to go to a rainy day fund. I wouldn't substitute, I wouldn't, it's not a question of, well, if you don't like this one, I've got, you know, this one to show.
No, but you just answered it, do we go into the stabilization fund?
Oh, the town would have to vote, we'd have to vote it, you have to vote it that way, yeah.
Could it go to pay down debt? Or could it go into OPEB or go into...
OPEB, or something.
You could, you could go to those things, the...
Whatever the biggest return on, on percentage.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, that becomes the question, what do you do?
You know, I just get the feeling when you start talking about chapter 70, 100 years from now, they'll be saying, "Oh, the blue laws, you mean?"
Yeah.
That were passed in the 1700s and...
Were ridiculous.
Just carried on till today.
Right.
So, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate what you've done, by the way.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, I understand, it's not... In terms of appointments, I have two quick appointments, the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, Ellen DeChavie's for a one-year expired term ending June 30th, 2019, and then Council on Aging Associate Member, Amy O'Grady, for a unexpired term that ends June 30th, 2020.
So I'll make a motion to approve Ellen DeChavie's for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2019, for the Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I'll make a motion to approve Amy O'Grady for a three-year term ending 6/30/2020 for the Council on Aging as an associate member.
A second. Both of those nominations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. We have one set of minutes tonight from the BOSS regular session minutes of 10:29:18. Anyone have any comments on those? They were very long.
They're getting longer. Oh, but there's a four-page minutes over, I haven't done a four-pager in years.
We want to keep you in practice.
Small print.
I'll make a motion to...
Say less words.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from October 29th, 2018.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0. We have liaison reports and referrals. Pat, do you have anything this week?
I do. First of all, congratulations to Max Manganas, who is the newest Eagle Scout in the town of Chelmsford, so attended his Court of Honor a couple of weeks ago, so congratulations to Max. Want to announce that the library has federal tax forms available. If you're ready to do your income, your federal income tax, they have those available now.
While the workers are there, process.
There you go, yeah.
Get them in now, get them in now.
Northern Middlesex Council of Governments is updating the long-term regional transportation plan. There is a survey for that, that, there is a link on our, the homepage of our website if you have ideas about how to improve regional transportation in the area. Take a look at that. And lastly, on Saturday, I was invited to the closing ceremonies for the Klondike Derby, which was held up at the Oak Hill Reservation. And this is a scout-sponsored program where they had 17 different groups from all around the region, and they spent a couple of nights there at Oak Hill, I certainly wouldn't have done it. And they have a competition on some of the skills that the scouts learn, like, you know, tying knots and following trails, and their favorite, which was the tomahawk throw. So I was glad I wasn't there for that. I don't know if they would have gone off, off target and hit me instead. So, anyway, congratulations to all the scouts that came and spent the weekend at, at Oak Hill with, for the Klondike Derby. And one other thing, I did get this notice this afternoon, next Wednesday, February 6th, at 10:00 AM, the US Mint is going to release a new quarter in Lowell that is dedicated to the National, Lowell National Historic Park, and it's going to have a picture of the mill girls working in the mills. So anyway, everybody is invited to this, it'll be at Lowell Memorial Auditorium, 10 o'clock on February 6th.
Do you get to swap a quarter, first quarter?
If you're a kid, you get one for free, but if you want to buy one, you have to buy minimum of 10, you have to buy and buy the rolls and what you can buy them after the ceremony. So that's exciting.
That's cool.
Round up some kids, George, we can make some money.
There you go.
Wow, they get a free quarter.
In a busload.
That's all I have to say.
A couple liaison reports, the Tree Committee met, and they've started discussions about potentially redesigning the tree layout in the town common. And that was, they made some, I thought, impressive progress. They met with the DPW, and that was, that was good to see. They met with the DPW, and that was, that was good to see. And then we, this Tree Committee, oh, and the Commissions on Disabilities is coming to the end of their kit for restaurants that they're going to be proposing to large font menus, and we did a tip sheet on the, for, for waiters and waitresses, you know, when waiting on someone with a disability, and there's a lot of other sort of, you know, information educational pieces that they're putting in along with the large font menu to promote that, as sort of a guide for restaurants. So that was nice. And Paul, I had a question for you from a resident, again, it goes back to the end of Mill Road and Turnpike, money was set aside for the, by the development for the redesigning of the road there. I know they got all their occupancy permits, the money was released, and they said they still haven't seen anything done to the road, it's still dangerous intersection. Are they going to, DPW going to do anything about that?
Not in the winter time, they're not.
But, but are they, is it slated to have something done there?
Yeah, I think, I think the plans look at it next season, next construction season.
I can just tell them to keep waiting.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's it.
George?
Just one thing, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of a dear friend, Franny McDougal, this past week. It was a beautiful mass, Paul and I were both at the funeral mass, and a nice turnout, and Franny will be, did a lot for the town, and she'll be missed by all, I think, so. Missed a good friend, and the Red Sox will miss their, their number one supporter. Thank you, that's it.
Emily?
Route Forty is coming up with some draft proposals for the south side and the north side of Route Forty, or Groton Road at the Route Three Exchange area, and how to develop it. So those will be presented at the next meeting, and then finalized, and we are trying to get everything ready for spring town meeting, and haven't really finalized and ready to go, so.
I attended the last planning board meeting concerning Route Forty, and they kind of tabled things, they're having a public input session before they come up with their final plans. I would encourage anyone who's interested in it to come to that meeting, express their views. I also attended the North Chelmsford Center Groups Meeting, and I heard some rumblings about how they thought maybe they should put it away for another six months to the next town meeting, which I don't think is very favorable. I agree that the fortunes of the town ride on economic development, and that is something that needs to be addressed. Also, it's a couple of months away, but the auction, I guess, for the west campus is going to be held in April.
Yes.
Anyone who's interested in taking, watching that, that might have some impact on the town.
I don't have a date, but there's, but we'll have to believe it's April, yeah.
And, you know, I would expect everyone, on Monday morning, will have a light commute, considering the Patriots are playing on Sunday night, and people will not be going to bed too early, one way or the other, so traffic may be light, and we wish them the best. So, any press questions tonight? No, all right. Our next regular meeting will be February 11th, and we will not be meeting before the special election, I assume.
We may, if this, if this police sergeant's award comes in, I'll let you know.